You ready? Brian, you ready? Okay.
2021 Special Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. Today we will have several items that we anticipate taking a fair amount of time. We plan to spend the majority of the day's meeting time discussing and providing the direction regarding capital improvement, program, project options, and rate impacts on the public works. Time allows, we will then move on to a presentation regarding our residential waste and recycling center program, including the proposed design of the Austin-Cheney RWRC site from our solid waste staff. And we will end with a department key performance indicator program overview from the project committee director, Blake Hart. When we complete the public work session, it'll be agenda, we will take a 10-minute recess to allow for staff to set up the meeting with the remaining items. I will recognize now our Assistant County Manager, Brian Matthews, to introduce our public work items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board and manager. Today, we've got some items for you to get some information on as far as upcoming decisions for our public works capital improvements program. This today is really more focused on sewer and capacity and how you make decisions as far as allowing for additional capacity for sewer. Water, for the most part, has already really been determined. Those projects are moving forward. Obviously, they will have some impact on rates in the future, but this is really more geared towards your sewer capacity. This is more informal. I'm going to be giving you presentation information, but please stop me if you have questions. If you want to take a break, just let me know, and we can always continue as you need to. So at any point in time, just signal me that you need a stop, and we can go from there. I'd like to first thank all the public work staff for all the hard work they did in putting this together for me. I did not put this together, they did. They sat down, went over it with me, helped me understand some of the particulars with it, but they did a lot of hard work and put a lot of effort into this, and I really appreciate that. They are also making printed copies. We should have those shortly, and we'll pass those out, so you'll have them if you want to have that information for later. But this is the presentation, and I'll go ahead and start. So again, don't hesitate to ask questions if you have some. So what we're going to do, so the purpose of the meeting is to give you some key decision points that you're going to need to make upcoming. We've got that set for April the 19th, for you to give us some direction. Also, keep in mind that the Board of Governors will also have to make decisions. It's planned that they will make those decisions in May. So once you give us some direction on the 19th, those will have to be packaged together for items that the Board of Governors will also have to take action on at a later time. So keep that in mind. Also, be aware that our system is a system. It has a lot of interconnectedness, and when you make decisions in one place, it affects decisions in another place. So there's not often that you can make a one-off decision that you don't actually have to change your strategy or make sure that that strategy works for something else in the future. And there will be rate impacts from your decisions. Just be aware of that. Again, as I said, we're going to focus on the wastewater side of it, and the capital improvement for water is continuing as it has been. So order of discussion, we're going to go basin by basin, starting with 12 Mile, going all the way to the East Side. We're going to tell you what we have determined as far as decisions that you can make, cost estimates, time, rate impacts, and options. And we'll do those by basin. And then, of course, at the end, we will give you a staff recommendation based on what we believe is a good option for the system itself. So let's talk about what we have as far as our sewer basins. What you see here are the defined sewer basins that the county has, which came out of your previous master plan. Now, these sewer basins can be changed by the board at any point in time, but this is what is adopted as part of your master plan. That's what you have in place. You have the Six Mile Creek, which that actually flows into Charlotte and is served by the Charlotte. 12 Mile Creek, you see that's the same color as Poplin, and that's because Poplin actually flows to 12 Mile Creek. So while they're two different sort of service areas, they ultimately are served by the same wastewater treatment plant. You have Crooked Creek. It's its own treatment plant and service area. You have East Side, which of course serves our East Side and flows to Monroe by contract. And then the other areas are identified, like Lake Lee, Richardson Creek, and Lake Twitty, but there really aren't any services really being provided in those areas at this point in time. At some point in the future, it is anticipated you may have service in those areas, and that's why those are actually created. So flows, what do you have as far as current flows for all of those areas? In the 12 Mile Creek Basin, and this includes Poplin, so Poplin is part of that number, you have 5.8 million gallons per day that's in that current wastewater treatment plant. For Crooked Creek, 1.15 million gallons showing for Crooked Creek. Those are your other package plants that you have up there. Currently, we flow about 1.2 million gallons from Poplin into the 12 Mile Creek. Again, that 5.8 includes that 1.2. You've got almost two going from Six Mile Creek to Charlotte, which we pay them to treat, and that's by contract. And then currently, from the East Side, we flow about a million and a half gallons from the East to Monroe by contract. We have 2.65 total, but we flow about a million and a half at this point in time.
Could you tell me how much Six Mile Creek, we flow 1.8 gallons?
We have 3 million gallon capacity contract. So we have up to 3 million gallons. We flow currently just about two. All right, so this is just a map showing you all the sewer lines, the forest mains, pump stations, wastewater treatment plants. It's just giving you an idea where all our system is. And as I pointed out earlier, Lake Lee, Richardson Creek, and your Lake Twitty, there really aren't any service areas in there. They're just shown for service purposes in the future, but we don't have any infrastructure in those areas. So one of the things that I think you often ask, and we want to make sure you understand, is regardless of whether the board makes a decision to provide capacity or not, if you were to make the decision, we're not going to add any additional capacity. There are still rate impacts that you will have to address in the future. And those things do add up to a rate increase that we're going to have to have over time, mainly because the 30-plus million dollars that is the board requested to be, from the Yadkin Project, to serve that Marshville-Wingate area, that was not originally included in the rate impact from before. So it has an impact on future rates. You'll have to build that into a rate increase. Obviously, the Yadkin Project is in there, but it was anticipated that the Yadkin Project would actually be broken up into two bond issuances. The LGC wanted us to do it as one bond issue. That's good, but it also creates a more urgent rate issue that was not anticipated. We thought we would have more time before we would do the second bond increase, so there is some rate impact for that. Altogether, based on what we've evaluated, and Stantac, our company that is helping us with our rate model, we anticipate that you will have approximately a 2.5% rate increase for the next several years to accommodate those items as well as your normal cost of business that you will have to have, regardless of whether you do anything in your system. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. In order to run your business with inflation, the cost of things going up, the project for Yadkin that was added, some of the other issues we'll have to deal with, we anticipate you will have a rate increase you'll need to address.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes, sir.
Brian, sort of a follow-up on Stony's question in the workshop we had at South Piedmont. Do we need to make a motion to find out the cost of what it would cost for us to divert some of our sewage water to Six Mile?
So we, I have that. I have that information.
You do have that.
Yes, sir.
I just didn't want to get past it since you had.
We have that as a component of this, and we'll show you that as well.
Good to you.
Yes, sir.
Brian, I think if I look back years past, this 2.5% is basically what we've been projected for many years as part of the cost.
The cost of doing business. Yes, sir. Inflation, as well as, again, we did add a project in there that was 30-plus million that was not originally captured in there.
Well, it's good you didn't have to bump it more.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Again, this is the baseline. So understand, other decisions that you make in the future, that will change that baseline number. Okay. So let's talk about 12 Mile. As I said previously, you've got the Poplin Basin as well as the 12 Mile Basins, all served by the 12 Mile Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the basin. You see, there's a disconnect between Poplin and up in here. I don't know if you can see that on your screen, but you, basically, this is pumped over, comes all the way down, and then gets to a point where it gravity feeds all the way down to the wastewater treatment plant. That's why I said right now, it's about 1.2 million gallons that's being pumped across and down, and it flows into your plant down here in 12 Mile.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
In water, we've got 5 million gallons that the IBT tells us how much we can pass over. Is there limitations on how much wastewater we can send back?
So, yes, sir. The issue here is at no point in time can we have more than 5 million gallons just pumped over and pumped back across. So we could pump 10 million gallons of water over as long as we pump at least 5 million back. So the key here is we all, we can never exceed 5 million gallons of Catawba water coming back over the ridge. All right? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
So yeah, if it's.
I think what you're saying is a little bit confusing.
Okay.
We can use 5 million gallons from Catawba in the Rocky River Basin. But we can put as many gallons back. We just have to, the 5 million gallons is as much as we can take.
Yeah, so make sure, I want you to make sure you understand. You cannot move more than 5 million gallons of water back across the basin.
To 12 Mile Creek.
To 12 Mile Creek.
Right.
That is your limitation. You could pump 10 over, but you have to pump at least five back. You have to pump five back over.
If we took 10 over, could we take 10 back?
No.
Why?
Because again, that number has to, you have 5 million gallons that, am I correct on that? Can you pump 10 back? I want to make sure I'm correct on that.
You can pump every gallon back that you're using, is my understanding.
Okay, that's a good question.
So you're asking about the grandfathered five MGD IBT. So I think if you pull 10 MGD of water from 12 Mile Basin into Poplin Basin, or from.
In the Yadkin.
From Yadkin to, from Catawba to the Yadkin Basin, you can pump all of it back.
Okay, he's right. I want to make sure you're right.
Yeah, so Commissioner Rush, you do have it right?
Yes, thank you.
But you can use up to five without pumping it back.
Does that answer your question? I'm glad you clarified that. So if you pump 10, you can pump 10. If you pump 20, you can pump 20. But at no point in time can you leave more than five over on the other side. Does that make sense now? You can't leave more than 5 million gallons.
You can't use six.
That's correct. You can't leave more than 5 million gallons on the others, on the Yadkin side. You have to at least have that balance of at least five.
Well, my understanding is, once the Yadkin's active in the water, they'll be providing water over here instead of the 5 million going over, correct?
So the ultimate goal, ultimate goal is for the Yadkin to serve most of the Yadkin Basin. Now, obviously, we're still going to need to pump some water from Catawba over and some of that back over the ridge, number one, to maintain our IBT, but also because the Crooked Creek Plant, I mean, that already flows to the, that already flows in the Yadkin, so we need to manage that IBT. So I don't think you're ever going to get rid of the Catawba flow. You're going to have some Catawba flow that's always going to go across the ridge. But the goal is to reduce that, so that you keep more of the Catawba water in the Catawba, and you use more of the Yadkin water in the Yadkin. But I don't think you'll ever get to a point where you don't have any Catawba water that you're pushing over the ridge. You'll always have some.
But that'll also increase, you won't be able to send as much fluid back over if you're not using water.
Correct. Yes, sir. So like I said, if you sent, if you sent two across, you can't send five back over. You have to, you could send two back over. But, so it always has to equal out. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so capacity for 12 Mile. So total right now in capacity for 12 Mile, 7.5 million gallons. If you look at what current flows are for the plant, that's 5.8, and that includes Poplin. That has Poplin in there. That's at 77%. Actual flows, keep in mind that the state regulates us at the 80-90 rule for actual flows, not on permitted and actual, but actual flows. So we're close. We're close to the 80-90 rule where the state's going to say, okay, you did 80%, do you have a plan in place?
Brian, would you say what you just said again?
So right now, for that plant, we're at 77% of actual flows in the plant.
And that includes?
That includes Poplin. That includes the 1.2 roughly that's coming from Poplin at this point in time. So.
80, 77% of the 7.5?
Yes, sir.
Well, on the previous slide, you added them together, and it got closer to 7.5. But now you're saying?
No, sir. I said that Poplin was included in that. I just showed you what the numbers were. So I showed you Poplin's 1.2, but I did say that that number is included in 5.8. But I wanted you to see that we are pumping 1.2 over, but it's still the same number. 5.8 is the number, including the 1.2 that we have from Poplin.
So as of today, we're at 77%?
Yes, sir.
Not 92, 95?
77% of actual flows.
Yeah.
Actual. Now, we are at 99% of actual and permitted. And that, I was actually, I'm glad you said that. I was going to point that out. The board adopted a policy where it said recently that at 95%, we were going to cap allowing any additional permitting of projects within our sewer basin, and that includes Poplin as well as 12 Mile. Those sewer basins run together, so it's 95% for both of those. If you take our actual flows at 5.8, and you take the permitted but not connected flows at 1.61, we're at 7.41. Now, I want you all to understand, that doesn't mean that we circumvented your policy and we permitted more projects. We didn't. We stopped permitting projects. This is, the actual flows have gone up because our 12-month rolling average has gone up. We've had a lot of I-N-I inflow and infiltration. We have to do that on 12-month rolling average. Unfortunately, that number hasn't come down. It's actually gone up. So that's why you see that at 99% and not at 95 or 96, is because that number continues to rise.
Is that 12-month through the end of March?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So every month, we have to, now, we get our data roughly about three weeks after the end of the month. So roughly in that timeframe, that's when we get our data to be able to say, where did, where did March stand? And where does April stand? That'll be sometime in May, late May, we'll get the numbers for April. So then we can be able to gauge that. When I say 99%, the state really doesn't care about 99%. They care about 80% of actual, 90% of actual. We are close on the actuals, but we're not at that point. Also, wanted to show you what we have sort of in the pipeline, what I like to say. These are projects that are in review but are not permitted, and they're not being moved forward at this point in time. You've got nearly 750,000 gallons worth of projects that are going through that phase. And if you added those together, you would be at 109% of the plant's capacity, if you were to add all that together. Now, obviously, we're not doing that. We're not permitting those projects. But at some point in time, we'll need to make a decision on what we're going to do about those projects that are waiting. And we know that there are projects out there that are going to come at some point in the future, and those are not reflected in that because they haven't come to us asking for any particular sewer expansion. So what does that mean? It just means that obviously, the 1.5 million gallon expansion is, you know, we're going to, we're going to use it up because we've got people who want it at some point in the future. The site is permitted to 12 MGD. And when I say permitted, that means that we have the stream data that allows it to be permitted to discharge up to 12 MGD. That doesn't mean that we have all the permits. We still have a lot of other things we'd have to do that we would have to go through the permitting process for construction, and your deener and DEQ. But that means the stream is permitted to go up to 12 MGD. If you wanted to go higher than that, we'd have to go through all the environmental studies to potentially go higher than 12 MGD. But right now, we have the ability to go up to 12 MGD in our current plan. Currently, as far as our master plan goes, back in 2016, when we did the master plan update, it showed an expansion in 2034 to 9 MGD. Now, you say, well, why were we waiting for 2034 for that expansion? Well, the master plan anticipated that the Lower Crooked Creek Plant would be farther along, that it would actually be moving through its processes, and there would be additional capacity gained because that Poplin Road Pump Station would no longer flow to 12 Mile Creek. It would eventually flow to Lower Crooked Creek. And it was anticipated that you wouldn't need this additional capacity until much later. Obviously, things have changed. We've had a lot, a very wet year this year, so I-N-I is a lot higher. We've had some growth and development, and so we are at the stage. And Lower Crooked Creek has not moved forward, so we don't have that in the works, so to speak. Originally, the Lower Crooked Creek Plant was estimated at, I'm sorry, the cost to do the expansion for the 9 MGD was estimated at $42 million. That's for $2034. If you were to do that today, it would be much less expensive because that's got inflation involved in that. And then, as I said, there would, you would gain some capacity if Lower Crooked Creek, because that was going to be diverting some of that flow to Lower Crooked Creek.
Can I ask you a question, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
The I-N-I is heavy this year because 2020 was a very wet year.
Yes, sir.
How much more than normal? You know, if you had 1 million gallons normal, I'm just picking numbers out of the hat, and it's 2 million this year. What's the ratio because?
Unfortunately, we don't have an accurate number for that. And the reality is this. We really, there's no way for us to measure how much rainfall and water is getting into our system. We don't have a way of measuring exactly how much water is coming into the system. We have a guess, and I'm going to say it's a guess, because that's all it is, that it's roughly a half a million gallons or more. It could be 750,000 gallons, but we believe roughly a half a million gallons or more is attributed to I-N-I. Now, again, that's a guess. That's all that is. So I don't want you to hold me to that number. It could be a lot higher. It could be lower, but we think that's reasonable guess for that.
What was that number again?
About a half a million gallons. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Brian, is there a period of time or a point where you can be pretty close to 100% assured that the flow is capacity and not I-N-I? For instance, like last summer, when we had six months of, practically total drought. Can you project that?
I don't think we can project that. I think that if we have more average rainfall for the next six to eight months, then I think you'll have a better idea how much was the impact from I-N-I, but I can't tell you that we'll know for sure. That answer, okay. So you asked me about the diversion. This is one of the things I wanted to tell you about. So we divert flows from 12 Mile to the Six Mile Creek actually more frequently than you think we do. And we do those for a number of reasons. Number one, we did a more recent diversion while we were doing the expansion for the plant. While we were going from six to seven and a half, we actually diverted flow to the Six Mile Creek facility there in Charlotte because we were doing the expansion, and we needed to be able to have that relief valve while we were doing that expansion. We also do that sometimes when we have periods of wet weather, issues that may have some peaking issues with the plant. We can divert flow that way. But I do want you to understand that it, the plant is designed to operate in a certain way. And so we don't routinely flow 750,000 gallons or any specific flow regularly because we have to have enough flow in our own plant to be able to operate it. You know, I said, well, what do you mean by that? What I mean is that you have to have enough flow internally in your own plant to make the biological processes within the plant work. So if you don't have enough flow, you might have too much phosphorus, so you can't meet your discharge limits. And we can't always gauge that every month, we're going to have enough flow in the plant to be able to discharge or divert flow to Charlotte. We do when we can, and that's roughly about $39,000 a month if you were to do all 750,000 gallons. That's how much it would cost us today. Now, Charlotte can raise their prices. They have. But that's roughly what we pay for 750,000 gallons. But I did want you to understand that it's not something that we just do like every day, every month. It fluctuates based on what's going on with the plant. Yes, sir.
Does that cost, does that include the pre-treatment?
That is, that is our industrial cost. That's everything. Now, what that does not include is capital costs that they may charge us. And they can charge us capital costs per the contract. We don't know that number till they send it to us. We budget roughly about $500,000 to $600,000 a year for capital costs. We don't spend that much, but we budget that much because we never know what the number's going to be. Annually, we spend about $300,000 in treatment to the city of Charlotte. So that 1.8, that's about 600, that's about $300,000 that we pay them to treat that 1.8 million gallons.
So real quickly.
Yes, sir.
Monroe, our contract with Monroe, and our contract with Charlotte. So we have 2.1 with Monroe, 2.6 with Monroe?
2.65 from Monroe.
And we've got three with Charlotte.
Three with Charlotte. Yes, sir.
Do we pay regardless, or do we still pay by the gallon?
We pay by the gallon for Charlotte. So we pay whatever we use, that's what we pay for.
So we don't pay 3 million unless we use 3 million?
That's correct. We have the ability to use 3. We only pay for what we use. So if we send 1.8, we pay for 1.8. Now Monroe, I think it's the same way. I think we pay based on what we use. However, there are capital costs with Monroe, just like there are with Charlotte, that we have to pay whenever there's a capital project.
But we have the ability and the equipment in the ground now that we can divert to Six Mile Creek from 12 Mile Creek?
We can divert. We do have a project coming up where we're doing some rehab of that, but it's my understanding that we could divert up to 3 million gallons with what we have in place.
We could divert up to, up to 3, we could divert, we don't need to divert 3 million.
I'm sorry, we could send, not divert. I'm sorry, not, not divert.
We could send, we could send a million gallons.
You're talking about.
To meet our $3 million gallon contract.
I'm making sure I'm clear. You mean from, from 12 Mile to that? Or from the Six Mile Basin itself?
From 12 Mile to Six Mile Basin.
Ah, I don't believe that we, we have the ability to send up to a million at this point in time.
So 750,000?
I think 750 is what we can send.
Okay, but that's, that's good too, because.
Yes, sir.
Now, because what I'm seeing in my mind is, is that we, we have about 80,000 gallons, is what was said in an earlier meeting this, this year, that we, if everybody came in, we'd probably be about 80,000 gallons over if everybody came in at 12 Mile Creek. Well, if we can pump 750,000 gallons, and we have, we have a million gallons capacity at Six Mile, all of a sudden, I can see that we can keep our promises. Or is that, or is that, we can't keep, we're accounting that in our promises that we made?
No, sir. We're not accounting that in our promises, but keep in mind what I said earlier. We can't consistently send 750,000 gallons over.
We can send 80,000 gallons. But we can send 80,000 gallons consistently.
Yeah, there's a number we can send, yes, sir. I, I, I just don't, I don't want you to think 750, we could send that every month. There is a number, yes, we can, we can send.
But, but what I'm telling you is, is that the calls that we get, you know, are gonna be, you know, what, what does this mean? Does this mean I can do my project or not? And if, and if we've told people that they, they could and they're, they're in line, then I'm hearing that we can, can, we can, there is a way for us to meet the commitments today that we've made.
I believe there is, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I believe there is.
Thank you.
So, I have a question for you.
Hmm?
What is Six Mile Creek's capabilities? I mean, are they nearing their capacity?
So, the, the, the plant for the city of Charlotte, I think, has significant capacity in it. We would just have to negotiate a new contract with them. Now, ultimately, what can the lines take? I mean, so that's part of what we'd have to evaluate. We've never evaluated how much we could send additionally through the line. In other words, if you said, hey, guys, I want 6 million gallons, we've not evaluated whether we could send 6 million gallons over there. I think you'd see that we probably have to upsize a lot of our lines in order to send that much flow over there.
And what's the cost delta between us doing it and paying them to do?
I don't have that in front of me. Roughly, we pay 300,000 for a little over 1.8 million gallons. Understand, that's a rent, that's not an own, so we take that number and back into it. We'll get it for you, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't give you that number.
What did you say the numbers were again, Brian?
We pay roughly 300,000 a year for around 1.8 million gallons.
That's total. That's total.
That's, that's total. But accurate, that's well told. Okay.
Excluding possible...
Excluding capital. Now, capital can be, that's, that's all by itself. They send us a bill for capital, we have to pay that cost.
If, if I might, so, Brian, you have one, on this chart, you have 1.82 MGD going from Six Mile to the McAlpine Creek facility in Charlotte today.
Yes, sir.
So, let's just assume that none of that is pump over from the 12 Mile Creek plant at this point in time.
My understanding is that is the flow that comes from Six Mile.
So, just for clarification, so to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that 1.82 is the gra, is gravity to the collection point on Marvin Road, and then it's pumped to the McAlpine Creek plant. And then you have that, the force main that we use during construction that comes from the 12 Mile Creek plant to the pump on Six Mile Creek at Marvin Road, or Mar, yeah, Marvin Road. And that is referred to on that list as a Tark Hill line. And if you remember, about three or four meetings ago, you approved a rehab, rehabilitation project for that line, and there's a liner that needs to be put in, in there because there's a lot of I and I and whatnot along that line. So, before we can pump anything else from 12 Mile to the pump on Six Mile Creek and push it up to McAlpine Creek Treatment Plant, that rehab project's gotta be done.
Right. And later on in the slides, when, when, when I actually get to the Six Mile Creek service area, because that was la, that was near last, it talks about that, I'm glad you pointed out, but a, as, as the manager pointed out, this is that, this is that force main that actually comes from the West Fork Treatment Plant that can pump or basically divert flow over here that then gets pumped to McAlpine Creek. All of this is gravity that flows here and then is pumped to McAlpine Creek. So, this is a project that is being a rehab that will actually serve that pump or that diversion, is what, was what the manager's talking about.
How long do we anticipate it to be?
I think we anticipate that's a project take about a year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I'm counting, three to four months.
I'm sorry, three to four months? Okay. Three to four months. Very good. All right, so, we talked a little bit about the current diversion, so I just wanted to let you know what we have with the current diversion as far as the 12 Mile Creek plant. Let's talk about your options, what you can do if you choose to do something with 12 Mile Creek. And I, as I stated before, these are all system decisions, so when you do something, ultimately, there's another system decision you'll have to make. So, can you accelerate the expansion of 12 Mile Creek from seven and a half to nine MGD? That means you move it up from 2034 to 2022. Certainly, you can. We estimate that the cost of that today, roughly, today's dollars, 26.3 million dollars. Now, obviously, we're not gonna build it in today, it's gonna take time, so if the board said, yes, we wanna do this, we have two-year design, two-year construction, we believe that it could be operational in four years, and we're basing that on the fact that we just did an expansion, and that took roughly about four years. You might be able to shave a little bit of time off of that, but we think it's gonna take about four years to put that into operation. Yeah, all right. Rate impact, because again, it is 20 point, 26.3 million dollars, which is not currently in your rates. You'd have to put that into your CIP, and your rates would have to reflect that. We estimate that that's about a quarter of, of a percent rate increase. So, if the base was 2.5, you'd add 0.25% for that, you'd have a 2.75% rate increase in order to accommodate the expansion from seven and a half to nine MGD. What does it do? Well, it does relieve capacity constraints within the 12 Mile basin. It also gives you some additional capacity in Poplin, because remember, Poplin pumps over. It allows for you to have permitted new projects, which are currently on hold right now, and it does allow you to maximize the use of the West Fork Interceptor project, which you've already approved, and we're moving forward with that as well. What's another option? Well, you could expand to 12 MGD. You can go straight from seven and a half to 12. Remember, I told you earlier that the plant is permitted for the stream to handle up to 12 MGD, so you could do that as well. Again, that was not factored into the current budget. That CIP was really long in the, in the out years. We estimate that to be roughly 72.2 million dollars to go all the way to 12 million gallons. Same thing, we think that would take about four years for you to put that in place if you were to just make that decision. And we believe that that would be a 3% rate increase on top of your base, so your total rate increase would be 5.5% if you decided to do a expansion of 12 Mile from seven and a half to 12. Yes, sir.
Would you go back one, uh, year? The, going from seven and a half to nine would be increasing a million and a half gallons.
That's correct, yes, sir.
I divided that by the industry imposed number of 280 gallons a day per house. Is that a fair number to use?
I think it's not.
What are you trying to drive at? What, what are you trying to get at? So, I understand what you're trying to get at.
Well, that, the million and a half expansion will handle about 5,357 average houses.
Uh, that's, that's per bedroom, that's not per house.
I know, but what I'm saying, don't we have numbers that say our average flow's about 280 a day per house?
That's our planning number, 280 per bedroom is our planning number.
No, it's not per bedroom.
I think it's per, 360 is the highest I've ever heard of.
Yeah.
280 for a four-bedroom.
320s, 360 is based on septic and 120 per bedroom.
I'm sorry, my, my mistake. It is per, I'm, that's a four-bedroom house, is that correct?
Well, my point here is system development fees coming in, and what are they now, 4,000 and what?
I think the total is about 11,000?
No.
No.
That's water and sewer.
Sewer's 44.
Sewer's 44.
Water's 30.
Okay. Sewer's 44, water's 3,000 something, so it's a little over 7,000 total.
Well, that, that system development fee on those 5,379 houses would give us almost 24 million in system development fee.
Okay.
So, I mean, I know we've got to have cost of living increases, but would, and I understand the system development fees have to be used in the basin they're paid for in.
Yes, sir.
So, would we not be getting almost the cost of the capital building of the plant from those CIP?
What, what you're thinking is that we're gonna get them right away. We, we don't get that money right away. That, my money comes in as a building permit is issued. Remember, those, that law was recently changed, so we, we get our system development fees when building permits are issued. You're not gonna build 5,300 homes immediately, and you're not gonna get 24 million dollars immediately, you're gonna get it over time. So, the key here is, at what point in time do all, is all that money come in, and what are the costs that you've had to incur for other things, and how much has that grown in cost over time? So, while I would say, yes, if you got it all the very next day, sure, but you're not gonna get it all the next day. It's gonna take years for you to generate your return on investment for that.
Are we not borrowing that money? We are not borrowing that money, we're paying cash?
Uh, it, it depends on the project. We pay go on some, some we borrow with money. It really depends on how it's structured. So, it could be that we pay cash, it could be that we borrow money, it, it really depends.
All right, I have a question for legal. I know the General Assembly changed it to where they only have to pay the system development fees when they pull the permit, and we can't make them pay a whole phase. But if they wanted to pay a whole phase...
Can I collect the money upfront? Yeah, I will let them speak to it.
I, I don't believe the legislation addresses that specifically. That's a question to, in terms of how we process that upfront, and I'm gonna look over here at them and say if you need to correct me on that. We do, so you shall collect at the latter of.
What? You shall collect?
Shall collect at the latter of, so we don't generally try to pre-collect or allow developers to reload it.
But what I'm saying, I understand what you're saying, but if they wanted to, would that not, that would nail down, I know we can't, well, it just seems like the way we were before this General Assembly statute was a lot better.
I, I would agree with you, yes, sir. But the General Assembly saw fit to say that they didn't think that was the best way to do it.
But I think, from what I'm hearing from the builders, they, just to, to make sure that it's there, they would do it in a heartbeat.
I think what we're here up against is, I, I think our, our position is that would take a legislative change, because that's not how we interpret what the, what the General Assembly did. Now, it doesn't mean the General Assembly couldn't do it, I think they certainly could if they wanted to, but they're kind of backtracking on what they changed, and they changed that, my understanding, is because the builders and the developers were complaining that they were having to pay these significant costs upfront, and it was sitting in the bank, and they were getting nothing for it, and we were the ones reaping the benefits from it. And, and they didn't wanna have to put that much cash or that much investment in front of it, they wanted to pay it as they go. So, I, I, I don't know that you could get the builders and the developers as a whole to agree to that change. Maybe the local folks think that's a good idea. I don't think statewide you will get them to agree that that's the best way to do it. We're unique. We're unique in that we have very limited capacity. When you have very limited capacity, those that want it are sometimes willing to pay more for it.
We have legislated ourselves into a corner.
Well, unfortunately, I, we didn't legislate ourselves.
I know we didn't.
Yes, sir. I, I, I will agree with you.
We're all in it together, though, so.
We, I will tell you that, um, Michelle Lancaster and I had a, had a conversation with the, I guess he's the liaison for the Home Builders Association, and we pointed out this very fact that we're unique, and that if you go to this situation where you're making us collect our system development fees at the back end, then there will be a time at which your projects will not have capacity, and we're not going to allocate capacity for you for an entire project in hopes that you pay us some system development fees all along. There's gotta be a way for us to make sure everybody gets a slice of the pie, and not one developer consumes all the capacity.
And it's, what they've done is ludicrous because they have the pipes in the ground, they have the water pipes in the ground, they have the curb and gutter, but they don't, I mean, you know they're gonna use it because they've got all the infrastructure in.
Commissioner Ray, but I think if I'm understanding your question, it's if a builder wants to voluntarily pay those fees...
Right.
Can we allow them to do that? And I think at least a part of the answer to the question is, is it says we shall collect at the later of. However, I don't think the legislation attempted to address that specific scenario. We'd be glad to look at that, get you an answer on that, as to whether we could on a different basis.
So, you think they could go ahead and pay for more?
No, I, I, I don't know either way. And from the look of the language, it appears to say they shall collect at the later of. If I had to forecast right now, I would say that's probably gonna hold, but we'd be glad to look deeper into that and get you an answer.
Well, would you do that? Because basically, they could have half their development with all infrastructure in and no capacity because we run out. Isn't that right?
That is, that is certainly possible, yes, sir.
Another way to look at that would be if, if you allowed a developer to pay upfront and you locked down that capacity, but you had another developer right down the road that was playing by the rules, let's say, and coming and getting the capacity when, when they permitted, then you've, you've allowed one individual to jump ahead of another individual who would otherwise be entitled to that, to that capacity. So, you know, it, there is a, an element of that as well when you start, you know, circumventing the process that the legislature's put in place.
Well, I real, and all that's based on having capacity. When you run out of capacity and five men have to vote to go into debt, then it changes the whole complexity of it.
Which is why we're unique in, in Union County. We are, we are limited capacity, and, and so it, it makes it just that much more of a challenge for us to deal with. There are other places which aren't limited in capacity. They don't care if they collected it building permit, they're fine. They'll get their money over time. We're not in that situation. We have a need today, and we don't have that capacity. All right, so, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
A quick one, Brian, on your chart where you showed 2.5% rate increase annually?
The one, the one that talks about the...
You said that's the cost of doing business?
Yes, sir, the, the baseline, baseline.
Right. Is that a, simply a annualized estimate that's put on every time, and there's no evaluation of the fact that, that energy costs fail or anything like that, so you're just gonna add that 2.5% irregardless? Is that correct or not?
Well, so, yes, sir. What now, that is what we estimate it will be. Obviously, as time goes, that number becomes a lot fuzzier, you know? We can tell you probably the first two or three years that 2.5 is probably reasonable. When you get into out years, I don't know what that's gonna be, because we don't know what the energy costs are gonna be.
So, if you don't know, could it be zero?
I, I would venture to say it would not be zero. It may be much smaller than 2.5, we're just not gonna know. We show you that because we really don't know what those out years are going to be. In most cases, inflation doesn't go down. Yes, sir.
Real, real quick, I think another way of asking Dennis's question, and where he was talking about the number of houses, the 5,000, 5,300, whatever number the, of the houses is, we, we didn't expect to do a lot of expansions for years out. We are actually having to accelerate what we're doing because all of a sudden, a flood of growth came in, right or wrong?
I, I, I would not say that this is all due to growth. Keep in mind, our growth rate for the last few years has been roughly about 2%. That is not explosive growth. We were running 5, 6, 7% in the early 2000s.
Okay, but in defense, we had 90 to 150,000 people back then. I mean, you know, 2% on 90,000 is a whole lot different than 2% on 240, 5,000.
Certainly, yes, sir.
So, so, back to what he was saying...
So, back to what he was saying, you know, these fifty-three hundred houses, these five thousand houses are gonna be built. We're collecting it at a faster rate than we have been in the past. Is that not helping offset the cost?
We're collecting...
The capacity fee, system development fee.
I'm not sure I follow that.
The extra percentage we've got put on there to build, to expand Twelve Mile, will not the system development pretty much pay for the expansion?
Well, you don't have money in your current, in your current CIP, in your current revenues to pay twenty-six point three million dollars. You're, when you, either if we pay cash, we have to have the money now.
Because we've used it on yet to what?
We use it for other projects, whether it's Yadkin or anything else. So you don't have the money to be able to actually pay cash for it. You'd have to generate money to pay cash for it. Or you'd have to finance a portion of it, which you may have to pay your financing rate on that. So it's not as if you're gonna collect all your money and be able to spend all your money at the same time. You're gonna collect some of it over time. I need twenty-six point three million dollars, like, in a year or two. You're not gonna have twenty-six point three million dollars without rate increases to be able to increase your revenue stream.
What would the interest rate be on that money?
It's gonna depend on what the bond market is at that point in time. I mean, we were lucky this time. We got very good favorable ratings on our bonds, but it could go over three percent. We don't know what it's gonna be.
So we gotta, so we're charging our customers two and a half percent more every year. Okay, I'm trying to figure out how we're charging them two and a half percent, but we, you know, what are we paying in interest? I don't know, just there is, there's something off there. I think what he was saying makes a good point, is why is it not covering some of that cost?
So what it will do, it will put money back into your system to be able to cover some of those other future projects, because you're gonna identify other future projects. You're gonna have other R and R repair and replacement that you're gonna have to do. You're gonna have other things that it will help to pay for over time. But it's not, you're not gonna have it today. So if you need twenty, now if you needed twenty-six point three million dollars in 2030, okay. You might be able to collect enough money, but you don't need it in 2030. You need it now. So you've gotta be able to generate the revenue now to pay for it.
But isn't it correct that each one of those two and a half percents this board will have to approve before it takes place?
Yes, sir.
And so therefore, if we have revenue coming in from additional houses, that'll impact whether that two and a half percent is valid or not. It could be less because of influx of...
Generally, what we...
System development fees.
Generally, what we ask the board to do is to do a multi-year rate increase, okay? Number one, that helps us plan. Number two, it helps us with our rating agencies. They see that you've made a commitment. Understand, we did have a, one of our rating agencies did lower us down a little bit. That happens. So we usually ask for you to do a two or three-year rate increase so that we can plan for that. Now, obviously, as time goes, we can look at that and have better data to say, well, maybe it didn't need to be two and a half. Maybe it only needed to be two and a quarter. And you can adjust that in some way. But I also wanna point out that this board has added things to our CIP that weren't in the CIP, which drives some of these rate increases. And I'm pretty sure you're gonna do that again in the future. You're gonna add some stuff to it that we didn't think you were gonna add to it. We didn't think you were gonna add the short line project. We had to build that into it. We didn't think you were gonna add the thirty million dollars. We had to build that into it. So I suspect there'll be things that you wanna do that we'll have to accommodate in that CIP and in your rates. Because you have philosophies and things that you wanna accomplish that we don't always know about.
Is it a pretty fair statement for me to say I pay pretty close attention to sewer issues?
Yes, sir.
Very close, very accurate, okay. I didn't know we had seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons available that we could pump over and we've got the equipment in the ground pretty much to do it today. That never crossed my mind. That's never been something that we've even talked about being an option.
Sure.
So we're leaving about twelve million dollars on the table with homes that could be built right now in the Twelve Mile Creek Basin, just on capacity fees for the seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons that we could pump over to Six Mile Creek. And we've got a million in capacity over there. So that's just the capabilities of the pump station that we have, not including what we can still build in the Six Mile Creek area and Marvin, Weddington and those areas. So you've just, I mean, that's the biggest news of the day for me, is that we have the capabilities of a seven hundred and fifty, half of our expansion for Twelve Mile Creek, we pretty much got available to us. Am I wrong in what I just said?
Remember, what I explained earlier is, just because we can flow seven fifty doesn't mean we can flow seven fifty every day and every month. Our plant has to operate a certain way.
Okay, if your plant is full, it can operate, it can't operate over full.
If it's, if we're getting plenty of flows in, you're absolutely right. Problem is, we don't, I can't promise you that when wet weathers change and the weather's changed, that the plant won't start to operate where it needs flow and we need to keep that flow.
Right, but you're not stealing flow. You just have it available if we had to have it.
If we have the ability, then we pump, we divert. If we have the ability, we can divert. Yes, sir. If that answers your question. We can divert if we have the ability.
Because again, what we're trying to do is figure out how to make the commitments that we've already made.
Certainly.
And then some. I mean, we've got about eighty thousand dollar, eighty thousand, eighty thousand gallon, eighty thousand gallons that we're trying to meet.
So you were talking about the seven hundred and fifty, the seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons? Is that what you're talking about here? This one, this number here? That's seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons?
Right, so, so we've got, so commitments, no, no, go over to the, what are we over? Because if everybody came in today, you said we're over eighty thousand gallons, if everybody walked in the door today and said, I need my sewer.
If you, if you did today, and now, understand, this includes both Poplin and Twelve Mile, okay? Both Poplin and Twelve Mile. Right now, right now, we'd need another seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons worth of flow in order to accommodate every project that has been submitted in both Poplin as well as Twelve Mile Creek.
Which we have seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of flow.
Again, we don't have seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons that you can just flow every day, all the time. There's gonna come a point at which the plant needs to operate.
But wait a minute, don't, I mean, let's don't get too confusing with it. That's the maximum day flow, right?
I believe that is.
So our maximum day flow is seven and a half million gallons. Now, eight point one six million gallons if everybody came in the door.
If everyone came in the door, yes, sir.
Okay, now, we're talking about expanding, which we can, but our maximum worst day, if everybody that was permitted came, come in, is eight point one six million. So, you know, that'd be our worst day. Not every day, but our worst day, right?
I think you're correct, yes, sir.
So that's seven hundred and fifty thousand is our worst day. It could be two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand. Worst day would be seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons.
Well, and, so that depends on wet weather? Yes. It could be, worst day, worst day, yes, sir. Make sure I understand what you're saying. Worst day. We have wet weather flows, that's the worst day.
I understand what Stony's saying. We want to operate Twelve Mile at full capacity.
We wanna operate it.
But I would say, we can't send seven hundred and fifty thousand every day over there, not because we can't, but because we don't want to. Because we wanna keep Twelve Mile. And you know, Brian?
Right.
We've, we're on you at this. I mean, when I came on the board, you were in planning, Hung was not even here. I mean, this is a new day.
Sure.
And y'all have been so transparent, but it seems like to me, when you start adding all the numbers up, we're in good, we're in better shape than we first thought we were.
You have the ability, six mile helps. I'm not gonna take that away from you. But it is always cheaper and better for us to run it through our own facility.
I know, but then you also say, some days you send a bunch to six mile because you need to do plant work at Twelve Mile.
Yes, sir.
Well, is that not messing up your process when you drop it below seven and a half a day?
We have to manage it. And you're absolutely right. But we have to manage, when are we going to do that? When is the appropriate time of the year to actually do those kinds of projects? We have to manage that flow. But you're right, we do. We make those decisions because we have to be able to divert it when we need to divert it. Yes, sir.
This is not a got you, Brian or Hung. This is a finally getting all the numbers together.
Okay.
Because I've heard Stony talk about when we were exceeding discharge limits and fines, we don't want that.
No, sir.
But we wanna use everything available that's available.
But is that like looking at your savings account and I'm gonna use every bit of it, every bit of it, when you do have a need for it, you don't have the opportunity?
Sure. And also, again, this is all information for you guys to make a long-term decision. Is using seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons at Six Mile Creek a good long-term decision? That's your decision. I don't think it is, but it's your decision. So ultimately, you have to look at what's a good long-term decision for your system. If your long-term decision is, I'm not gonna expand Twelve Mile and I'm gonna rely on that six mile, fine. Just understand, that's a temporary solution. That's not a long-term solution.
Brian, don't think that's what I'm saying, just in case. Because I'm saying that, you know, if we expand Twelve Mile, if we all said today, let's expand Twelve Mile to whatever.
Sure.
It's gonna be three to four years minimum, right?
Yes, sir.
So, again, the commitments that we've made, the commitments that have been made by the towns that we serve, that's of paramount importance because those people have invested real dollars and real money to make that come true. And now they're sitting there in limbo because they think that we don't have any capacity and we have capacity. And we have the equipment in the ground to use that capacity already without spending much at all.
Yes, sir. What you make is an excellent point. There's another item in there where I bring up that I want you guys to understand, because I haven't gotten to that yet. You set a ninety-five percent cap. We have capacity in the plant, okay? We have capacity in the plant. You set a capacity limit because we did not have a decision from you to add capacity or to find additional, or to expand capacity. So if the board, and I'm just gonna go ahead and put it out there, because this later on is where we ask for you to consider this. If you give us the ability to expand any of these plants, we're gonna ask you to remove that ninety-five percent cap. Why? Because we can permit projects in our existing capacity. And if we ever get to a point where we're getting close, especially for Twelve Mile, we can divert flow while that expansion is going on and not in place. We've already put that in a recommendation. I just hadn't gotten to that yet. But you're absolutely right. We can meet those commitments today. If the board gives us approval to do some type of a capacity increase and you remove that cap, we can continue to permit while we're waiting for that expansion to come online.
Brian?
Does that make sense?
This is kinda like that Pat Sajak song, you know, I mean, that game. You want us to wait till we get to that, but I can already spell the word, no word. We got the capacity.
It's okay. I, that's why I said, this is one of those things, I want you to stop me, I want you to ask questions. We put it in a linear fashion, only because that's the easiest way for me to put it in a, well, them to put it in a presentation. But if you wanna skip ahead, we'll skip ahead.
I'm not, no, I don't wanna break the thing, but what I'm saying, it's like Wheel of Fortune, that's what it is. I wanna, it seems like to me, we've got an answer and we need, and this is not for future growth, but just for the projects in review that we have approved that, you know, I think...
Can I jump in? May I jump in? Because I know it's hard to see, but Brian, looking at you guys and not looking at me, but I think there's one point that I at least wanna make sure that you all are aware of, and probably something we would need to go back and research with the state over there. The state permits the plant. The plant is, so Twelve Mile is permitted at seven point five million gallons per day. It is not permitted for seven point five million gallons per day plus a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon diversion to Six Mile for Charlotte water. I'm sitting here and I don't know all the details, I'd have to go really have to research it. I don't know that you could do that. I don't know that the state would allow you to do that. We wouldn't be able to permit connections that would result in flow above seven point five.
But I think what they're saying is...
We're not wanting to go above seven point five. We're just wanting to use six mile as our cushion.
Yeah, I think the diversion actually reduces the amount of flow going into the plant, is it not? So if it does, if it reduces the amount of flow going into the plant, then the plant has additional capacity.
Yeah, we talked about, I'd say, we would really wanna study what it would mean operationally for the plant, for the system, to use a diversion tactic as a longer-term strategy than we're using for right now.
We've been using a diversion tactic for twenty-five years.
I don't think that that's, I get from Commissioner Rushing that he's not suggesting that that's a long-term solution. I think he's suggesting that we have the ability to meet our needs today.
Meet your promises.
And our promises. And I think we can, with the capacity we have in the plant, as well as any diversion that we may need to take while the expansion itself is going into construction. Now, I'll have the engineers look at it and make sure that I'm not telling you something wrong, but I believe we can meet our commitments while we are in the process of the expansion.
And Brian, one other thing, because the seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons has changed, because it was eighty thousand gallons, like I said, a couple months ago. So maybe I'm asking the wrong question. Is that if everybody who's come through planning or asked for a rezoning or asked for anything?
That's every type of project. It's a sketch, that's a sketch plan, that's every type of project. Now, we all know that it may not be seven hundred and fifty. Some of those may go away and never come through.
Right, but that, but the actual...
But right now, that's everything.
But the actual handouts that we've handed to people, were only about eighty thousand. Where we're at in permitting, actual permits and things like that, were eighty thousand, right?
You're talking about the ones that are waiting for a permit? I'm not, I'm...
The ones that've been reviewed but just waiting on a permit.
If they're been reviewed and waiting on a permit, I believe that's eight...
So we're about eighty thousand gallons.
That's been reviewed, waiting on a permit.
So we're not only talking about the ones that are just in reviewing stuff, we're talking about the kinda, we're talking about the beginning of the planning process.
There, yes, sir, there are a lot that are in the beginning, yes, sir. Absolutely.
But they haven't got to this board.
No, sir. Or they may not come to you because they are in a town. Because remember, this is a wastewater treatment plant that serves every, it serves all these towns. They don't come to you. So if they get rezoned, it doesn't come to you for a decision, it goes straight through the system.
So this would be every subdivision.
If you have a subdivision that gets approved in Indian Trail, that doesn't come to you for any kind of approval, it goes straight through this process. Now, if there's no capacity, you have to make decisions on that. But as far as going through the system, it goes straight into the system and moves through.
So like the projects in Waxall, for example? So if Waxall had projects that they were concerned about because they're in the discussions of doing them, they could still do them with this solution?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So how long, we just, we just finished a one and a half million gallon upgrade.
Yes, sir.
Within the last two years, right?
Yes, sir. Nineteen, I believe?
November twenty nineteen.
Nineteen.
Okay, roughly two years, or maybe a little less.
Yes, sir.
So if we allow these future in-reviews and let the towns prove whatever they want, it's gonna go through the system, we'll never catch up.
Well...
There's a high probability we'll never catch up.
That is a very reasonable way to look at this, because the reality is this, you know, we plan for twenty years out, thirty years out. And we look at, what are the growth plans for the towns? What are the growth plans for the county? And then we try to come up with, what does that need as far as water and sewer capacity? And then that's what your CIP is built around in your master plan. How can I incrementally increase capacity to serve the growth and development? If this board decides that you don't want to incrementally serve that growth and development, well, then we're gonna always run up against, we're running out of sewer capacity. Because there's a point at which we have to have the next plan and phase. We have to be doing the next project to be able to add capacity. Because if we don't, we're always gonna hit this point today where we're saying, how are you gonna give me capacity, Brian? What are we gonna do?
We'll be back in two years. Same thing that happened in mid-two thousand.
It is always possible.
That's what got us in trouble there.
It is always possible, yes, sir.
And like I said, everybody's new, so right now, we don't, can't point at nobody. But wherever they came up with this one point five would carry us to twenty thirty-four. That, I'd like to see the figures on that.
I, uh, well, again, remember, one point five from Poplin was going to be diverted to Lower Crooked Creek. Because you would've had Lower Crooked Creek in place by twen- before twenty thirty-four, had it moved forward faster. So you would not have one point five going into Twelve Mile Creek. You would gain that capacity back. And you would've had the expansion we just did at one point five. So that's nearly three million gallons of capacity you would've had. Obviously, we wouldn't have it all at once. It would've come over time. But that was the anticipation, is you were gaining some capacity back from Poplin and keeping it in the Twelve Mile by itself. And that's why you didn't have to expand Twelve Mile as as quickly. That was the reason for it.
Yeah, what what happened is is there was ne- there's never been a water supply in the Rocky River Basin. So we've never had the water to operate a sewer plant in in that basin. So now that, and the water for Yadkin was, we were supposed to be drinking it by now. We were supposed to be drinking it at this point.
Yep.
And and if we were drinking it at this point, we would need a sewer plant to put that water in. So so the whole push was to get a sewer plant to put that water in. Um, if we don't support that sewer plant, then where's the water gonna go? And there's a couple options, but but the, you know, that it pushed that Twelve Mile, that Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant was gonna be utilizing that that they were gonna get back the sewer water that was going from Poplin Road Pump Station to the to the Rocky River Sewer Plant.
Right.
Uh, so that's, it's all interconnected.
Yep.
And and the delay in the Yadkin delayed the need for the sewer, which which made the problem at Twelve Mile Creek worse.
Move up faster.
Just everything just got jumbled up and the and the problem.
Well, though, and 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 to add to that is the, it was known at the time, and this this is predates me doing this and young and it, but it was also anticipated that there would be a hefty increase for the rates for Yadkin and that the board would not be willing to absorb the additional rate increase for Lower Crooked Creek. Because you, again, it's eighty to a hundred and twenty million dollars you gotta come up with if you're gonna build a new plant. It was anticipated that would also be a heavy lift for the board. And so the plant was also, that was also another reason to push it out to out-years, is try to manage your rate increases. So you had delay and you had rate increases, which all factored into why this thing got pushed out farther than than it was anticipated to.
See, the Twelve Mile Creek Plant was permitted and pending at twelve million gallons. And that was in two thousand and six. Um, it only was a three million gallon plant at that time. And they already had, like our numbers here of eight point one, it was four million gallons more than that permitted and pending in two thousand and six. But those projects went away when the economy went south. And um, and a lot of people lost their business and money and it was a bad situation for the people in the county that that are in that business. And and so that's what we have to be careful of, of, you know, not getting in those situations. But again, I'm hearing good news today that that we've got seven, and we have seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of sewer contracted that we're not accessing yet and we've got equipment in the ground to move it there. So so I I feel a lot better about our situation as far as meeting commitments that we've already made.
Yes, sir.
Mit, Brian, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this got, uh, mentioned as part of the discussion a few minutes ago. Is what is the cost of treating per gallon at the McAlpine Plant under the contract relative to our cost of treating at Twelve Mile Creek? Um, my understanding is, and this is a very general, uh, understanding, is that the cost of treatment at McAlpine is more expensive. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that cost actually increased sometime over the last three to four years. Um, relative, not only treatment, but there were pre-treatment. Now, we're we're required to pay for industrial pre-treatment.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Which the more, and the way I understand that to work is the more gallons you send to McAlpine, the higher the cost that is associated with the industrial pre-treatment component of that. So the more you send, not only does the cost at McAlpine, to treat at McAlpine, go up relative to the number of gallons, but what they charge you to treat those gallons in the industrial pre-treatment also goes up. So while we have this contracted capacity there relative to use and it may be a, I'll just refer to it as a safety valve, until some other permanent solution can be uh, had or or figured out. Uh, I would, I would personally like to see the, uh, a financial uh, analysis of what that would cost relative to what we are collecting based on our cost. Because if we are not collecting, or we expect to collect a certain amount to cover a cost of treatment at Twelve Mile and we are actually expending more than that to send it to McAlpine, then we're dipping into a savings account of some type somewhere. We're dipping into reserves to pay for that. So I think before we hedge all of our bets on sending, uh, that kinda flow over, I think we all need to understand what that cost differential's gonna be.
Well, it should be pretty simple. We should have a cost testament of what we're sending over. We're sending two million gallons today.
We will, we will get that information for you. I don't have.
And and as your proposal to use those two million gallons we're sending there today and bring it back to Twelve Mile.
Oh, no, sir. Absolutely not. Not at this point.
Well, but if it's costing us out the roof, why would we not do that?
Well, at this point in time, that's a, that's a pretty hefty cost by itself, because everything gravity feeds that way.
Opportunity costs is what what the whole point is, the opportunity cost. Why's it gonna cost to pay the debt on a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty million dollars by the time it's built?
It's all in what the board is willing to absorb in cost or rate in, rate impacts?
I have a question.
I just was, I I didn't mean to insinuate it's gonna be a cost through the roof, but I I think it's well-informed is a better decision, right? So we need to understand what that cost is.
We we will try to get you some additional information on the cost of that. Yes, sir.
All right, the figures you had, thirty-nine thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons.
Yes, sir.
Is that for seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, it'll cost us thirty-nine thousand a month?
Yes, sir, that's what we calculated.
Okay. Well, that's a dollar and seventy-three cent a thousand.
And and I can't tell you that that is.
We're charging more than that.
Yes, I, my guess was, we're charging more than than we're paying. Obviously, the amount that we generate.
Be going in that savings account.
But I think it's a good, I think with the manager, it's a good, we need to give you that information so you understand, well, what's the delta? What are we generating in excess of that? How are we using that? And what would it be if we used that in the future?
Can you bring it back to us on the nineteenth?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We'll have that for you. All right. Spirited discussion there. That's good. We've got lots more slides to go, so. All right, so I I think I, we talked about that already. We talked about the increase on the, what it does for option one. Talked about option two, three percent, uh, if you did it all the way up to twelve million gallons. Uh, let's talk about the Poplin Road, uh, pump station. Let's talk about that. All right, so currently, and I I've said this before, Poplin is really part of the Twelve Mile Creek Plant. It's pumped over to that plant. So as you can see, there's our, there's our pump station, our force main, which pumps it all the way over. Comes into gravity here at the East Fork Interceptor and it basically, gravity flows all the way down to Twelve Mile Creek. We also are in the process of building the West Fork. Uh, that will take some of this area off and it no longer has to be, you know, flow down to this point and then come through. It can now go gravity through this interceptor and come in. So that that helps leave pressure here, because there's a lot of flow coming through the East Fork. Um, but that's how this is currently managed. Now, the board recently approved, uh, a equalization tank. The equalization tank will provide roughly about eight hundred thousand gallons of additional capacity. I believe it's a three million gallon EQ tank. Is that correct, John?
Three to four.
Three to, three to four million gallon EQ tank. But it provides us with roughly eight hundred thousand gallons of additional capacity, because it sorta holds that flow, sends it on non-peak times.
Per day?
I'm sorry, said it again.
Per day.
Per day. That's per day? Per day. Yes, sir. Uh, it manages our wet weather flows and then it helps for new demands of projects. Because we do have a lot of projects that are looking to develop in this area. You've got at least a couple of your interchanges from the bypass that are in this area. This is one area we've seen a lot of interest in in growth and development. It also helps to manage our IBT. You understand, we push water across into the Yadkin. So this flow back over also manages our IBT for us. It lets us stay in that, uh, five million gallon grandfathered IBT that we have. Uh, estimated project cost, roughly about fifteen point eight million. That includes land acquisition. We have purchased the land. We do own that at this point in time. And we expect that it'll be operational by fall of twenty-two. That's our goal, to have it operational by fall of twenty-two.
That's a tank like Crooked Creek.
It is, yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is a, just a closer-up version of the Poplin, uh, service area, as you can see. Uh, this is really what's served by Poplin. Um, you've got your force main, as I said, which comes down, ultimately comes through and serves into Twelve Mile Creek. So current capacity at your Poplin, it's a one, rated at one and a half, uh, million gallons. Actual flows through March, one point two. So it's eighty percent of actual, now, that's actual. Uh, obligated, if you add the obligated flows, um, it would be a one hundred and one percent. That means stuff that, um, is permitted but not connected. And then projects that are not permitted, that are just waiting in the hoppers, are almost another half a million gallons, all up to a hundred and thirty-one percent. Now, remember, the board has approved a project in here with the EQ tank. We're just waiting on whether you approve capacity, because here's the point. If you don't approve capacity, then this real EQ tank, it serves a purpose, but it's not really gonna provide any additional capacity. Because if you don't have additional capacity in Twelve Mile, you're not gonna gain additional capacity in in the Poplin. You're just gonna manage the wet weather flows. So you 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 really, they they work together. They work in tandem. So if you do a capacity increase at Twelve Mile, it will help capacity in Poplin. Keep that in mind.
And this point four five, not permitted or obligated, is not a part of that point seven five we talked about in Twelve.
So.
It goes there.
That, that's a good question. Is that part, I believe that is not included in that point seven five. No, sir. That, this is its own flow at this point in time. That this is, this is in addition to that point seven five. In addition to that point seven five.
Misleading for what we've been discussing for the last thirty minutes or so.
But you need to see how it all fits together. So I'm sorry if, I didn't mean to mislead you, but Twelve Mile has its own set of projects. Poplin has its own set. They feed into each other. But Twelve Mile has projects that are committed. Poplin has Twelve Mile projects that are committed. They ultimately add together. So this point four five here, that has to be added to that point seven five, okay? Now, again, I still believe we have the ability to serve it. If we do capacity expansion, we allow the cap to be removed and we manage that diversion, we can still meet this. I don't want y'all to think that we can't. I believe we absolutely can do that. So I don't want you to worry that we can't do it, but then that's not a twenty-year plan. That's maybe a five or seven-year plan. That's what I want you to understand. That's not going to last long before you have to have another decision you have to make, but I'll get to that. What we need to do, okay, as I said, if you don't do something with Poplin, I mean, with Twelve Mile, you're not really gonna gain additional capacity. If you do decide to make a decision to expand Twelve Mile, we're gonna suggest that we at least set aside some of that capacity for the Poplin area. Because obviously, if we're building the EQ tank, we need to make sure that we allow that area to have some expansion. So we want it to be able to provide some additional flow in there. Is that eight hundred thousand gallons? Probably not. That's more than half of your increase. It's probably something less than that. But whatever it is, we're gonna suggest that we reserve some of that to flow from Poplin into Twelve Mile Creek until another decision is made for capacity.
Now, most of this Poplin is controlled by municipalities in that area.
I will say that the Poplin is probably eighty-plus percent, um, municipal, uh, land area and and the county's twenty percent or less.
Well, let me ask you this. The the we look at obligated once they pay for their permits. How do the municipalities operate? Can they make commitments for that capacity that?
No, sir. The only thing that the municipalities can do at this time is use their zoning authority to approve a project for zoning. Ultimately, it has to come through our process of plan review and we have to determine is there capacity to serve it. Now, I think we've had this discussion before. If there is capacity, then we can't turn them down. If there isn't capacity, then we can say, I'm sorry, there isn't capacity. We do believe that we can reserve capacity for a basin. That's not reserving it for a development. That is for a sewer basin. We believe we can do that. But we can't say, Mister Commercial Business, we're gonna let you have sewer. Mister Residential Developer, you can't have it. We don't believe you can reserve it that way.
But with our nine, ninety-five percent rule we have right now, we aren't issuing capacity, no matter whether it's a municipality or the county.
That is correct. We're not issuing any commit, uh, capacity projects at this point. We have, I believe, three, maybe four, that are in Twelve Mile Creek and one or two that are in Poplin, that have reached the point where they could be permitted, but we cannot permit them. Now, there's a bunch of other ones behind it, waiting to go. But we've gotten, I believe, three to four that are in Twelve Mile that are ready and one or two that are in Poplin that are ready at this point in time.
But if it's a hundred home development, they're not gonna permit them all at one time.
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
Well, they'll permit them as they're built, right?
So generally, what happens is that the project will come in and they'll submit their flow requirements. Now, we have to submit a permit to the state and the state has to show how much flow that's going to use. They're not submitting us a permit for one house or ten houses. It's gonna be for their development. So essentially, that flow is carved out. It's not given to them. It's carved out, because we know that that's coming, okay? That's what we consider permitted at that point in time. It's not necessarily given to the developer, but we have to carve it out because the state has issued a permit for that amount of flow. And then over time, that flow will be connected. It'll become actual, not permitted, and those numbers will change. All right. Let's see what we got here. Option number one. Okay, and I know there were some discussions about, uh, well, let's do, let's do another pump over. What if we were to expand our pump over from Poplin? Right now, we pump one and a half million gallons. What if we were saying, now what? We're gonna pump over from Poplin. That's what we're gonna do. All right. Well, this was studied previously. Um, and essentially, it's about a hundred and twenty-one million dollars, and I'll get to the details a little bit later. But you have to expand your pump station. We anticipated that to be roughly about an eight million gallon pump station, okay? You have to expand your lines to be able to pump that much flow. And you got a whole lot more that you have to expand in order to do that. Um, again, that was based on a number that was given to us in twenty twenty, twenty eighteen. We've got an inflation factor in there. That's where you get a hundred and twenty-one million dollars. Um, design, basically, twenty twenty-two, construction, twenty twenty-four. Operational, we estimate in about four-plus years. It might take longer, but we think you could be operational about four-plus years. If you did that, it's about a one point seven five percent rate increase for five years. Then you would not have to have that rate increase after that. So roughly, your rates would go up four and a quarter percent, starting in twenty twenty-two, for the next five years in order to accommodate that. As I said, it would be a new eight million gallon pump station. You'd have roughly over a hundred thousand, um, linear feet of new force main and sewer. Because you'd have to have that. You don't have the pipe diameter to serve that much flow to do an additional pump over. And I'll see if I can show that. So this current line is not sized enough to handle that additional flow or really any additional flow. You'd have to expand this line in order to flow more flow to get to this point. You'd have to expand this. You'd have to expand this line, as well as expand all of this gravity flow in order to be able to get additional flow here to Twelve Mile Creek. That's one of the reasons why it has an expense tag to it that's relatively high, because all of these things have to be done. The lines are not large enough to accommodate additional sewer. Doesn't mean you can't do it. It just means it's not going to be an inexpensive solution. Now, it is relatively quicker. You can do it in roughly about four years. But you're expanding your pump station, and you're extending the lines in order to do that. If you did option two, we've talked about, what if you flowed everything to Monroe? Okay. That would mean, what if we flowed Crooked Creek? What if we flowed Poplin all to Monroe? What would that do? Well, the estimate, around three hundred million dollars to do that. And the reason for that is, we don't have the lines in place to pump all of that. We don't have the pumps in place to pump all of that. Doesn't mean you can't do it. It just has the hefty price tag, because also, we'd be sending roughly, by twenty-fifty, these are our estimates, we'd need about thirteen point five million gallons of flow, of treatment capacity at the city of Monroe. They only have a ten and a half million gallon plant right now. Essentially, we'd have to have a brand-new plant, and they'd have to have their plant. So you're talking about a twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six million gallon plant that would have to be built to accommodate all the flows that we would send, as well as the city having the flows that they need. You take that, plus all the pumps, plus all the lines, that's where you get to roughly about a three hundred million dollar cost. That's what that would roughly be. That's, we estimate, that's an eight-to-ten-year process. The plant has to be built. That's eight-to-ten years. Building the lines and the pumps, all of that's roughly an eight-to-ten-year process. Six and a quarter percent rate increase that you'd have to do through twenty-twenty-seven, for a total of eight point seven-five percent. And as I said before, that's sending the flows from Poplin, from Crooked Creek, all to Monroe. It would serve the east side. It would serve Lake Twitty. It would serve Bear Skin. All of that would be served by that, which is how you come up with approximately thirteen point five million gallons of capacity needs. And I believe I've got a map showing that. So if you've got up here, it's anticipated that the Poplin service area will generate by twenty-fifty nearly four million gallons of flow. That's what's anticipated. Crooked Creek anticipated that it could generate up to two point eight, almost three million gallons of flow. Lake Twitty one and two, again, there's nothing there now, but it's anticipated by twenty-fifty, that could add another two point four million gallons. It's anticipated that the east side would be a total of four point five, and then there's a little bit from this Bear Skin Creek, and all that adds up to thirteen point five. That's where you get that number from. Again, that's, those are estimates. This number could be lower. This number could certainly not be there. But based on a twenty-fifty plan, that's the estimate. Option three, well, that's the option that was originally part of the master plan, and that is, you do build the Lower Crooked Creek plant. Anticipated that it would take, again, eight-to-ten years to build. As Commissioner Rushan has pointed out, nothing's certain. There's always the ability for an environmental agency to send up the red flag. They could do the exact same thing for the Monroe expansion. If we did that, there's always that opportunity. But generally, it takes eight-to-ten years to put one in place. We estimate that to be about a hundred and twenty-two million dollars, and that's a four million gallon plant to be expanded in the future.
Brian, does that cost to include the pipeline to get it there?
I believe it does. Yes, sir. I believe it does. All right. Again...
In the past, we've been told it didn't.
No, it includes the conveyance from Poplin Road to the new site.
From Poplin?
Okay.
Yes, sir. So the rate impact, if you were to do this, one point seven-five percent for five years, for a total of four and a quarter in twenty-twenty-two. It is the lowest-cost method. If you were to do that, it's the lowest-cost method. It does benefit the Twelve Mile Creek plant, because again, flows would be diverted from Poplin to there, and it's a long-term solution for the Poplin basin. But that's one option. Option four is do nothing. I mean, obviously, the board can do that. At that point in time, there's no cost impact. There's no time impact. We still have a baseline increase of two and a half percent that we would need to do over time. And you would essentially max out your pumping and your capacity. We wouldn't be able to issue any more permits if you were to do it.
Can you go back one side?
Yes, sir.
So one point seven-five, now go to the next side. Forward. So one point seven-five plus two point five would be?
Yeah, yes, sir. That's where you get four point two five, because the baseline's two point, two point five. So baseline, just two point five. You're not really, there's no real, there's no increase from that. It's just baseline. All right. Let's talk about Crooked Creek. All right. So Crooked Creek's that, it's in the middle. And right now, it's our, it's our opinion that this plant really cannot be expanded. It's landlocked. The state has already informally indicated that they would not support additional flow in the river at that location for that. Obviously, if the board told us that's what you wanted to do, we'd move forward with it. But we wouldn't be surprised if it came back with a hard no. But okay, if that's what the board told us to do.
Let me ask a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
If you, so it's not that we couldn't treat more there. It's just we couldn't put more in the river there, or creek?
We can't treat more there. It's one point nine. I mean, one point nine is the...
You can't, it's not that we can't release more into the creek there. It's that we can't treat more there.
I think it's two things. We have a limit of one point nine million gallons. So we can't treat any more than that. And the state's not going to let us go up to one point nine. Keep in mind that if we decide to do nothing for Crooked Creek, they're not going to let you go to one point nine. You're going to get to about eighty percent of one point nine. That's what you're going to get to, because they want a cushion between that and the actual limits so that if you have peaks or anything, you can accommodate.
Because it's kind of confusing. Before, you guys were telling us about, you didn't want to ask about doing it because it could affect the Lower Crooked Creek.
I haven't gotten to the second part of it. So the first part is treatment. You can't treat more than the plant will let you treat. The second part is, what is the assimilative capacity of the stream? Can the stream handle additional wastewater flows in it? We've asked that question informally. We got back an answer from the state. No, we don't believe that you can increase your discharge in that area. Now, that can be a couple of reasons why. I'm no expert in this. But understand, when you have low flows in a stream, that means its assimilative capacity is low. Now, we're adding more capacity to the stream by putting flow in it, but we are also putting stuff in the stream that wasn't in there before, because we do have limits of what our discharges are. So ultimately, at some point in time, the state's going to look at it and say, that segment of the stream cannot handle any additional flow or discharge. We're not going to approve any additional discharge. Now, other parts of streams may have more flow, and they may be willing to give you permits in other parts of streams. But they look at it by segment. Can this segment of the stream handle additional flow and additional discharge? We got currently an informal no. So it's a two-part question. Can't treat more than we have right now. And right now, we believe, based on what we've heard from the state informally, they won't give us a permit to allow additional discharge in the stream. So it's a two-point answer.
And so you couldn't even treat it there and take a pipe down and discharge it lower in the creek?
Could you discharge it farther out? I mean, that's always possible. I mean, you'd have to get a discharge permit for it. You'd have to get the state to agree to it, and you'd have to build the pipeline.
Which is what we would have to do anyway.
But then you have to be able to expand the plant.
And that's the question.
And I don't think you can expand the plant. So it's two parts. Yes, sir. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. So what do you do about Crooked Creek? As you can see, it's kind of sandwiched in the middle. It's a system. You kind of have to operate it as a system. Let me tell you what we have as far as capacity goes. Current capacity's one point nine. Roughly about one point, well, one point one-five right now of actual flows. That's sixty percent. That's good. We've been less impacted by wet weather flows for Crooked Creek than we have at Twelve Mile Creek. Some, but less. Obligated plus permitted is another, almost a half a million gallons gets us up to eighty-six percent. We still haven't hit that cap yet that the board set of ninety-five percent. And projects that are in review, that are waiting, that could be obligated but aren't, another six hundred-plus thousand gallons. That would put you over the capacity of the plant at a hundred and nineteen thousand gallons. As I said, site's landlocked. It's old. You cannot divert right now. So that's a big key, right? We could do work at Twelve Mile Creek, because we could do some diversion at Twelve Mile Creek. It's much easier for us to do that. Doing significant improvements to that, we don't have the ability to divert right now. It's not there. And at some point in time, this plant is going to have to have either a replacement, another facility, or we're going to have to do something else with it. It's to the age where we're band-aiding it together the best we can. So just keep that in mind. So what do we do with Crooked Creek? You can do the pump over like we talked about. And this is the same slide from before, because it's part of that original capacity. It's still three hundred million, because you included it with Poplin. You pumped Poplin and Crooked Creek. You sent them to Monroe. It's eight-to-ten years to develop. It still costs you roughly six and a quarter percent to do just that, or eight and point seven-five total. Yes, it certainly gives you additional capacity, but you need thirteen point five million gallons of capacity in Monroe to be able to do all of it.
And why would we pump Poplin over there?
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to go to the trouble of creating a pumping system to pump Crooked Creek, you might as well pump Poplin. Because keep in mind that what you're ultimately trying to do is manage your system, and you want Twelve Mile Creek to have some relief. You don't want to overwhelm Twelve Mile Creek. And the goal was...
But we're trying to put water back there because of the inattention transfer, right?
You would ultimately flow some flow back. You could split it, where you would flow some flow back and some flow the other way. So you would manage that IBT, but you would lower the amount that you were sending over and sending back so that you could manage that IBT. But the goal would be to give yourself more capacity at Twelve Mile Creek. That would be the goal. Option two, pump over from Twelve Mile by itself. You just pump Crooked Creek all by itself. All right? That's about a hundred million dollars. That would take about four years, because that's roughly like if you just pump from Poplin. If you, just the same thing with Poplin. You just have less pipe that you have to provide, because Poplin was farther up. So you have farther, more pipes that you have to provide. And you probably have a smaller pipe, a smaller pump station that you're creating, because you don't have as much flow. So you wouldn't have as much of a large pump station there. So it would, it would give you additional capacity, but it's not an inexpensive project. All right. What if you were to send flow from Crooked Creek to Lower Crooked Creek? I mean, it's you built a new treatment plant. This was originally part of the strategy. It was anticipated that you would, if you built Lower Crooked Creek, you would send both Poplin and Crooked Creek to the Lower Crooked Creek plant. It's an eight-to-ten-year process, roughly about a hundred and twenty-two million dollars. One point seven-five percent rate increase over five years. That would be your other option. And then, of course, if you did nothing, you would still have your two point five percent baseline rate increase. You would not be able to issue any additional permits once you do hit the eighty percent mark, because we don't, we would not have a plan in place to be able to issue capacity improvements in that area. So that's Crooked Creek. All right. Lower Crooked Creek, because I've been talking about it, but I want you to see it. This is what originally was planned and part of your master plan. If the board were to do something with it, it would be able to serve Grassy Branch. It could, if the board approved it, add some additional gravity area. That's the approximate location of it. It would also serve Poplin, and it would serve Crooked Creek. Some flow from this area would still be pumped out, down to Twelve Mile, to manage your IBT, but the majority of the flow would go to the wastewater treatment plant.
Why would you have to? If Yadkin water's available, then, why would you have to transfer? Still have an IBT you got to worry about managing when you've got the Yadkin water where you don't need the Catawba?
So my, that's a good question. So my understanding is, it's awfully difficult to valve this off so that no Catawba water is going into this area. So you're going to have at least some Catawba water that will go over into the Yadkin Basin, which is the need to pump over to be able to manage that. It's extremely difficult to make sure that you never have any Catawba water that gets pushed over there. I'm not saying it couldn't ever be done, but I think the thought was, it's pretty costly and pretty difficult. So why make that something you do right away?
It may not be five million gallons that you have to have.
It wouldn't be. I think you would manage that. Now, I'm going to say this, and we don't have the, we don't have the data to be able to back it up, but the board has asked questions about, well, what could we do with the city of Monroe to help them get additional water? Well, one of the strategies can be, if we gain back some of our Catawba water out of that IBT, can we then sell more Catawba water to Monroe through an IBT? We're evaluating that. I'm not saying it can or can't be done. I believe it can be done, honestly. It's just a matter of what are the mechanics behind it. But if you can save some of that capacity that you're sending over to Yadkin, would that give us the ability for Monroe? I think it would. So that's always a strategy that we can explore with the board.
Does Monroe also have, it's a two million gallon a day?
They do. So they have one point nine-nine grandfathered, where they, because the way I understand it, is the valve is on their side of the line, so it's their IBT. So this would be our IBT, and our folks are looking into how would that work? But I don't see a reason why. Yeah, I don't see a reason why we can't make it work, because if we have the ability to flow in the Yadkin, what would prevent us from being able to sell that water to Monroe? It's just, what are the mechanics behind it? All right. So I talked earlier about what it would take to serve the Lower Crooked Creek. As I said here, here's the plant estimated area. The original project, if the, if the board were to ever move forward with something like this, the plan was, this pump station here, which is the Poplin Pump Station, there would be a gravity line actually built all the way to this plant. This would now come off a line. It would no longer serve as a pump station, per se. It would actually just be the ability to flow the flow directly here. Crooked Creek, over time, would actually have another gravity line built that would tie in and ultimately flow to this wastewater treatment plant over time. You wouldn't need this right away, because what you would do is you would manage the flow within Crooked Creek, and you would let, as development came, make that become something that was built sometime in the future. But ultimately, that would be the goal, was to flow this and this into this, as well as Grassy Creek to flow into here. That is, that was the ultimate goal behind that.
Before you move away from that, John Schutek, is the purple line there from the Poplin EQ tank down to a Lower Crooked Creek plant, you said that's included in the one, the million twenty-two thousand, whatever.
Yeah.
Or twenty, million.
Hundred and twenty-two million.
A hundred and twenty-two million.
Yes, sir.
Say it right. But the red line, as Brian said, that's a future line. That's not included in the a hundred and twenty-two million?
No, sir. That is correct. Yeah, that's a good point.
So that's what I had heard. That's what I was talking about.
Right. So you're, this line is included in the a hundred and twenty-two million. That line is not.
Now, I think we had conversation at one time... I think we had conversation at one time that Crooked Creek, because of its age, would end up being more of a pump station than a waste treatment plant.
It would.
If we had Lower Crooked Creek.
Yeah, the goal would be because this plant is limited, its age, and what it would take to try and make it actually operate is not worth the cost of it. It would actually serve as the ability to let this flow gravity here, and then it would pump, as a pump station, flow back across in order to manage that IBT. But as I said, we would use a whole lot less of that water from Catawba, and we'd pump only what we really needed to pump back over to manage that IBT. But you are right, this purple line is what's included, this red line is not included in that budgetary amount.
John, follow-up question on the red line. Was there a timeline associated with the construction of that red line? Or is that like a 10, you know, once the plant get, if the plant were to get built, is that red line like another 10 years out? Because the, at that point, Crooked Creek is still a viable operating plant. How, what, give the board some frame of reference for the time period in which that red line would be built or would have to be built?
So that was, that red line is intended to be constructed as development demands. So if, as that area continues to develop, that gravity line will be constructed from that connection point on upstream until it was completed and connected to the existing Crooked Creek plant.
So if you want to, I think what you're getting at is, you know, how does that gain you capacity in Crooked Creek? I think that's one of the things that you're getting at. And by turning this into a pump station and allowing this flow to be pumped across, you increase the ability of this area to flow as you would for Poplin. You know, you're going to be able to pump more flow and allow more capacity within this basin until such a time that this drove the need to be built. Now, timing, is that 10 years, is that 20 years? It's going to depend on how fast this area starts to expand.
How much is that going to cost to make a pump station at Crooked Creek? Existing Crooked Creek?
I don't know if we have that.
My understanding is the headworks is already in place, it's just a matter of building the actual pop.
So why would we have not done that instead of the equalization tank?
You talking about at Crooked Creek?
Yes.
Well, first off, it doesn't pump that way right now. So keep in mind that Crooked Creek flows into the Yadkin basin, and it, so it does not...
Right, but you're talking about making it a pump station to pump into 12 Mile Creek?
Yes, because if you take Poplin offline, Poplin is no longer flowing to Catawba. That's that IBT. So you still need to manage your IBT. So you need to bring some of the Catawba water back over into, so that's why it would be turned into a pump station, because you no longer are pumping flows from Poplin. You're pumping only from Crooked Creek.
Okay, so today, could we pump 500,000 gallons of water or sewer per day?
Not today, because it's not set up to actually pump.
But if, could we vote to do that, and how long would it take to turn it around to pump 500,000 gallons back over? Or that, I don't mean total?
I'll interject here. So Mr. Rush, you're making a great point. The issue at hand is that in order to set up Crooked Creek as a pump station, you have to utilize the existing force main that Poplin is using. So unless Poplin is offline, that interim step of just putting pumps in, which the plant is set up to do that, you need to install those pumps, make some piping connections, and use the existing conveyance corridor. So unless Poplin is offline, you can't physically do that.
Right.
So we couldn't put a parallel line or put another line in beside the Poplin road line and do that?
You could build a second conveyance corridor to do that, and I believe Brian went through that, and that's a significantly more expensive one.
Yeah, the one that I showed you before, 98 million, that's if you built your own conveyance corridor for Crooked Creek and ran it to 12 Mile. That 98 million is if you turned Crooked Creek into a pump station, you ran its own separate force main all the way to 12 Mile Creek, and you pumped it to 12 Mile Creek. That's what that cost is.
Would you have to run it all the way to 12 Mile Creek?
Well, run it to be able to get it to 12 Mile Creek. And I understand because you're adding more flow, remember, guys, if I'm going to add more flow from Poplin, even if I don't add more flow from Poplin, I have to expand those lines getting to 12 Mile Creek because they can't handle additional flow.
I guess if you've got to do 98 million dollars to do that, why is that red line going to cost us 98 million dollars?
I don't know how much that number is. We don't have an estimate.
Could be 98 million dollars.
I don't know that it would be 98 million.
So instead of 122 million, now we've got a 300 million dollar?
Keep in mind, that's a gravity line, it's not pumping, so it's less expensive for gravity. I'm not going to tell you it's 98 million, I don't know what that number is.
I'm just amazed that up in the northern, northwestern part of the county, in the Union County part of it, we can pump to a pump station, to a pump station, to a pump station, and the builders are, I guess, paying for that somehow. But it's costing us close to 100 million dollars to do something similar. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, we're flowing a lot more flow than they're flowing from their developments. You know, we're flowing a regional flow. That's a little bit different, operates a little bit different, and I get it. But, I mean, again, we're often criticized that our numbers are wrong and they're off because they're too low. We're giving you a number we think it is, and it may be low, guys, we may not hit the mark.
Well, the concern that I have in it is that the number to the decision that you won't made is low.
I understand.
The number to the decision you don't want made is high.
I think they're all high, but I think they're all high, but I understand what you're saying. I mean, what we try to use, and you know, we have engineering companies that help us create our estimates. They use existing costs for pipes, they use existing costs for the pumps and the mechanics, and they basically use that and say, well, this is how many linear feet it is for pipes, this is how big the pipe is, and so, and they use that as their estimate. Now, again, those estimates were done back in 2016, 2018, 2019.
It was higher then.
They're years old, years old. So we're giving you a guess.
Okay.
Okay. More questions about this one, or are you all good with that so far?
I'll tell you what, Brian, let's take a 10-minute.
Take a break, yes, sir.
Take a 10-minute break and we'll get started fresh on that. Is that okay? Okay. We'll come back at 3:00.
All right. Thanks, sir.
All right, let's get started.
It'll do.
Started back, Brian.
Where is Brian?
Yeah, I know, I was getting his leg. Wasn't that bad before, was it?
No, 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 it wasn't bad at all, just.
All right, so I know you've got plenty to do, so let's move on here. So, again, what the original strategy was, why Lower Crooked Creek was the strategy. What you had is, you had ultimately by 2050, projected flows from Poplin at 3.6, Crooked Creek at 2.8, another pump over here from Lake Tritty 2 and 3. All of that would eventually go to Lower Crooked Creek, would add up to 8.2. You would ultimately pump some of this area here, over to 12 Mile, pump over here, over to 12 Mile. This would continue to flow as it does to Charlotte. And then you would have 4 and 1/2 or so that would go into Monroe as well as this Lake 21. The original plan was that you would start off with a 4 MGD plant for Lower Crooked Creek. That could be expanded over time. You would obviously try to get the limits for the stream as high as you could get them, so 10, 12, whatever. You would try to get the limits for the stream discharge as high, and then you would expand the plant as needed. They pointed out to me, because I asked the question, I said, "Well, why wouldn't you just build the 10 million gallon plant to start with?" And the reality is, is that you still have to maintain all of the stuff you have in the plant. So if you're not running it and operating, and it's really not good for the system to have all of this capacity and not be operating. You really want to marginally increase it so that the plant itself will operate efficiently. You don't want to sit on a bunch of a capacity if you don't have to. Doesn't mean you can't do it, just understand there's still operational costs, maintenance costs that you have, maintenance costs you have to deal with. So it's almost better to plan for expansions over time.
And that reminds me of what you were saying about the 12 Mile Creek and pumping over 750,000 gallons. If it's not efficient, if you're so worried about 750,000 or whatever to pump across, if we expand it from, instead of going to 9 million gallons, we go to 12 million gallons.
We wouldn't appreciate, we would not recommend that either.
Okay, so you'd recommend.
We showed that because we wanted you to see it, but we would not recommend that you expand that to 12.
So just go to 9, then to 12?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
But you can build some base infrastructure that, there's efficiencies there that you don't have to operate.
That is correct. And you can, you can make it easier to expand over time if you set it up that way. And that would be how we would recommend you do it if you did it. So, that was the original plan. You created those, the ability to pump that flow over there, which then gained you capacity back in the 12 Mile Creek because Poplin did not pump over there. So, these were the initial capacities. If you started with the 4 MGD, 4, you would pump Poplin over at 1.2. Grassy Branch would go over there from the half a million gallons that it is. You would have permitted projects that are in Poplin today. I'm just showing you that because they would obviously go to that. You've unobligated today, those would go. And again, that doesn't mean that over time you would have more unobligated. Of course, you're going to, but that just shows you, today, if you were able to operate this plant today, you'd have roughly about 2 MGD going to that plant today. And then you would expand it over time if you needed to. Crooked Creek would ultimately flow to that, that would bring it up to 3. The permitted and unobligated projects would bring it to over 4. And that's where, if you heard John say, "You let that development dictate when you build that line connecting Crooked Creek all the way to the Lower Crooked Creek." Because you don't really need it necessarily right away. You look at development, and that's when you decide, "When do I need to build it? When do I need to put it into my rate structure? When do I actually need to have that in place?" Now, what that means is the board has to have a strategy. We have to, we have to be consistent with that strategy. Because when you make U-turns on us, well, the system doesn't operate very well when you make U-turns. We need to know, what is your strategy from A to D? So that we can plan for all those things in between and make it work, make the timing work, get the rates where they're reasonable. So, that's why it helps us for you to give us direction on long-term, what you want to see. And ultimately, this would be our recommendation if you were to build Lower Crooked Creek.
Right.
Yes, sir?
For my benefit, I don't know if it would help anybody else. It would be good if, and I know it exists, but I'm talking about, very simple, a timeline of, if the CIP stays like it is now.
Okay.
This is what we're going to be wanting to do here. You see what I'm saying?
So, yeah, so you want to know what, how these projects would fit into a timeline?
You're talking about making U-turns?
Sure.
If nothing changes, this is going to be coming at the board in 18 months.
Yes, sir.
So it's not a surprise.
If you, on the 19th, if you don't mind, we can provide you with that. So you see that timeline? I mean, I don't have it in front of me right now.
I realize that.
But we can.
And that would be, seems like to me, that would be another transparent thing that we would need from this point forward. You know, just, it shows you what's in the pipeline.
Absolutely, I think we can do that, provide that for you. Just to give you some of the numbers, estimated. Originally, the estimate for this was $80 million. That was back in 2016. As we've seen, cost have increased significantly. We're estimating that cost if you were to build it. And obviously, it wouldn't become operational until 8 to 10 years from now. There are components of it you would have to put in place. If you were to do it, you have to buy the land, you have to do the studies, which take about 5 years. Then you would start your design, then you'd start your construction. By the time you needed the money, we're thinking it's going to be about a $122 million project, okay? As I said, it's 8 to 10 years, 4 years for permits, 4 to 5 years, 2 years for design, 2 years for construction. It's a 1.75% rate increase for 5 years. That's on top of the 2.5%, so a total of 4 and 1/4. It certainly brings you.
4 and 1/4 per year.
4 and 1/4 per year. And again, I want you all to understand, when I give you each one of these numbers, that's just this. That's not all that other stuff, that's just if you did this.
But it's not an additional 4 and 1/4 year, it just stays flat. That 4 and 1/2 will still be there each year.
It's 4 and 1/4 every year, so yes, I mean, obviously, if you pay $100.
If 2 and 1/2 stays, it'll be 4 and 1/4 each year instead of 2 and 1/2.
That, that's correct, yes, sir, absolutely. This is, based on the original study, the most efficient method to provide for capacity for Poplin, Crooked Creek, and Grassy Branch. You decommissioned Crooked Creek, which was an important issue as far as the system goes, because that plant, at some point in time, is going to have some significant operational issues. It also relieved some capacity at 12 Mile by gaining about a million and a half. And it does help us with Grassy Branch. Even though we have to do something in Grassy Branch before this is done, ultimately allows us to take a packaged plant off the line. We don't have to worry about it anymore. Because packaged plants, ultimately, over time, they just don't operate as efficiently as a traditional plant does.
Brian, if I could ask one question?
Mm-hmm.
How, and this might be for hung. How much do we grow, like, in our county, if we're growing at 2, 2 and 1/2% per year, our value grows, our sales tax revenue grows, our tax base grows, but so does your customer base, it grows as well. How much is it growing per year?
Yes, sir. So, we've shown that information in the past, but if you look at the last 2 years, we've grown our customer base between 2 and 1/2 and 3 and 1/2%. So I think it was 3 and 1/2 last year and 2 and 1/2 per year.
Okay, so you're growing your income by 2 and 1/2, 3% per year, right?
Our revenue base would grow.
Yes, our customers and our revenue, yes, sir.
Customers and revenue are growing. So, like, if the school system came to us and said, "Hey, listen, for the next, for the next 10 years, we're going to need 4 and 1/2, 5% increase in our budget." Overgrowth. Because that's what we're talking about, this 4 and 1/2, this 4.25 is over your growth. So you're, so you're growing by 2 or 3%, and then you're going to grow another 4.25%?
Well, that's, remember, this is the amount it takes to pay off all of the cost of all these projects.
Okay, but, it's going to be 2 and 1/2, you said regardless. So, so if we're growing at 2 and 1/2, and you're getting your rate increase 2 and 1/2, I mean, so that's on top of growth. So like I said, if the school system came to us, told us the same thing, I think we'd be very cautious about that.
Well, keep in mind, what we're telling you is that the base is 2 and 1/2. We're saying to do this is 1.75. So your base is built into this.
Right.
And if you grow and you do nothing, you still are going to add some customers. We're going to add some customers on the short-line project. You've already put that in place, we're going to add some customers that way. We're going to add some customers from development that's already been approved. They're not customers yet, but they're going to come online over time. They're not going, the day we stop getting customers, we've got probably several years' worth of growing customers. So, ultimately, this is what it takes to pay for $122 million on top of all of that. There isn't enough money generated from 2 and 1/2% growth to cover another $122 million in revenue needs to pay for this.
But there's not even enough in 2 and 1/2% growth to cover existing customers. If we're raising the rate 2 and 1/2% on top of 2 and 1/2% growth, you're telling me there's not enough money to even take care of the ones we got?
Well, remember, you guys added $30 million to the budget that wasn't in there. And that's for the pipeline from.
It's not been spent yet, though, right?
What, I'm sorry?
It's not been spent yet, right?
That was not in the budget.
No, 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 he said that money hadn't been spent yet.
No, it hasn't been spent, no, sir, it hasn't been spent.
So, again, back to, you know, I just, okay, like, I keep hearing in my mind, you can't commit future boards to this, you can't commit future boards to that, but, except for this. And, and the decisions we're making are going to commit future boards to big.
Brian, so it might be, you know, so it is an excellent question. Why doesn't the growth of the customer base cover the growth in our expenses? You know, what Brian's really talking to you about is our capital program. We also have growth in our operating expenses because of staff and electricity, utilities, whatever. The, sort of, if I can sort of lay a preview, so on the 19th, we'll be, we'll be back there next week. And one of the individuals that I'll be speaking to is Andy Burnham from Stantec about rates right here. That would be an excellent question to ask him next week as to, you know, why, why do we have to have rates grow faster than the growth in the customer base? If you don't mind waiting till we can get an answer from him.
Okay.
I'm not the expert on that one, so we do have a company that's helping out with our rates. I think they can help you answer that question better.
And that was going to be a question that I'd ask Amy. If I'm not mistaken, Stantec takes into account the projected growth in the customer base and then as a factor to determine what ultimately is required in dollars, not necessarily in percentage, but in dollars, and then converts that to a percent. But I agree, I think next week with Stantec representative here, that would be an excellent question.
But you get my point about, like, the school system. Last year, how much of an increase did we give the school system overgrowth?
Sure. I, I absolutely understand what you're saying.
Do you remember that number?
I don't remember the number, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah. Over, overgrowth?
Over this, 3%, you're talking about next year?
No, no, last year, we, the school's tax rate stayed the same, so we didn't raise their tax rate.
It was like, it was right at 3.
That was growth in sales tax and, and.
It was just an additional 3% of revenue. I don't, wouldn't call it growth, we just gave them additional 3% in revenue.
Okay.
I don't know that I'd call it growth, we just gave them an additional 3%.
Over what we would have already given them?
Over, over what the previous was, yes, sir.
The planning mechanisms are a little different from.
I'm just trying to see if we're, our public works department's being efficient with the money.
Sure.
Because we would, you know.
I got you.
We, we don't have any problem with trying to find answers to questions that we don't have right now. Because sometimes I, I don't, we don't all know all the answers, but we'll get them for you.
I'll tell you what, I can promise you, the cost of operating my home goes up about that much as well. That's the nature of the beast. And if you look at building right now, it's scary.
Costs have gone up significantly. That's, I will say, part of our challenge has been that we did not anticipate the construction cost would escalate as much as they have. But then in future years, they may not. We don't, it's all a guessing game. So, a rate model, and I know that Andy and his folks will explain this, it's made of a lot of assumptions. So that's the best you can do. You take data that you have, you make assumptions about the future, and then you plug all that in, and you get what the anticipated rate is, okay? It doesn't mean that, Nick, when you do a complete analysis the following year, that you find out, was that the rate increase you needed? It may not have been. It may have been off a little bit. But our crystal ball is as good as it can get. So, I think Andy's the best person to try to answer that question for you. But good point. Again, we, I talked about the Grassy Branch. I'll show that in just a few minutes, because Grassy Branch is one of the things we need to talk about here. So, I did want to tell you what we have in place. We do have money currently in the budget for land acquisition as well as the NPDS permitting process. If the board were to do anything with the Lower Crooked Creek, there is money currently in the budget for that. There is a site that is preferred.
Would you spend that money?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If we didn't approve it, would you spend that money?
The board would actually have to, we would have to put it in the CIP and you tell us what you want to do with it. If you said you're not going to build a Lower Crooked Creek, then we would, we would want to reallocate that to something else.
Brian, if I, yeah, the money is actually already in the budget. It's been allocated for this purpose. You would, you know, we wouldn't be able to spend it without you, with the board approving the contract for it, because it would be above the threshold that the manager could sign.
Okay.
And if you turned it down, then we would say, well, okay, do you want to reallocate it to something else? Because obviously, if you're not building it, you need to do something with it.
To, to answer the question, would you spend it? Not without board approval.
Okay, well, I mean, you said it's already proven in the budget.
Well, if it's, it's still going to come back for, for board approval.
Right.
Before it gets, before that, that amount of money gets spent on a contract.
Almost everything over 50 comes back to this. We've got several nights agenda.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I just didn't know if you had already started that permitting process, would that money be spent?
We have not started that permitting process. We have not. Now, obviously, we could, the board could give us direction to do that, because there's funding available for it, but we have not started that.
It would require additional direction.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And anything over 50,000, I mean, anything that's in the budget but over 50,000, it still comes through the board for approval.
If it's a contractual, yes, sir, absolutely. Like I said, if you were to move forward at some point in the future, the key here is you have to identify the site, because that's where you actually do your studies and you do your stream limits, because you have to have a site for that. You do your studies, they take several years, they cost several hundred thousand dollars to do. And ultimately, we do consider that to be a long-term solution for Poplin and Crooked Creek. So let's talk quickly about Grassy Branch, just to bring you up to speed with Grassy Branch. This is the one where we've had the overflows in the past. Obviously, the, it's, what has helped a little bit is because of the school, not necessarily being in session, but they're coming back now, because the school board's made a decision, they are going back to school. So I think you'll see that ramp back up. We have been under basically consent order for that. We're working with the state on what we need to do in order to make them satisfied with how we fix this issue. Essentially, what that boils down to, and I'm just going to skip past it, is it boils down to, we have to spend money to expand the treatment capacity for that facility. We don't have a choice. So we're going to have to add, we, basically, from the state, we're estimating we're going to need to add another 70,000 gallons of treatment capacity. That doesn't mean that we want to permit more projects over there. It means we need that treatment capacity to manage the flows that we already have.
Would an equalization tank not work?
No, sir. This is a brand-new addition to the actual treatment.
So like, you get what I'm saying, like with Poplin Road, we've got an equalization tank, but.
It's my understanding that a treat, that a EQ tank would not work for that.
So on the weekends, when there's nobody there, in the schools, and using the sewer, on the summertime, sure, it wouldn't help.
Okay. Equalization tank costs more than that upgrade.
Grassy Branch has a big I and I issue.
It, it, the plant itself has its own issues. So EQ by itself wouldn't necessarily solve that, because the plant has its own issues.
I think sometimes they've said they hit 150%.
Yeah.
With the I and I that.
It, it can be.
Part of that problem.
Absolutely.
We went over a stony when school was out, and it was still running full.
Right.
Oh, I mean, full, full wasn't.
But we do own the land there, that's the one.
We do have the land and we can expand it, I believe, so, again, this, we don't want to, we don't want to provide new connections. This is really to manage the overflows that we have. So you're going to spend roughly about $3 million for this. And we're going to have to do it fairly soon, because we're finishing up those negotiations with the state. Once they, once we all sign off on it, then we're off to the races for design and construction. That's money that we're not going to get back. Because whatever you do in the future, we have to spend this pretty much right away. All right, last area, well, 6 miles last area, but I'll talk about East Side, okay? East Side, what do we do right now? We currently have a contract with Monroe for 2.65 million gallons. That does also, we. That does also, we have capital that we have to pay them as well. So, we pay for as much flow as we send, as Commissioner Rushing asked before. If we send a million, we pay for a million. If we send two, we pay for two. But we spend capital whenever they do capital projects. We have to pay for our share. Current, we're running about one-and-a-half million gallons of flow that we pay for obligated. It's about thirty thousand gallons. And projects that we know that are in review, that are sort of hanging out there is another essentially two-hundred thousand gallons. So, roughly about one-point-seven-four. We're, we're in decent shape right now as far as capacity goes. But that does not include what our East Side study sewer projects that we will need by twenty-fourty. We hired Brown and Caldwell to do an East Side sewer study for us. They evaluated that whole area based on some of our desires to increase industrial development, to help wing it with some of their plans for expansion in that area. We think we're going to need at least another two million gallons of treatment in that area by twenty-fourty. So, that would increase our total to two-point-six, four-point, I'm sorry, four-point-six-five or roughly almost five million gallons is what we would need. So, what are our options? Yes, sir.
In that previous slide you showed of Monroe option earlier, cost involved?
That was, yes, sir.
Is that, is that projecting any of the additional capacity needs on the East Side as part of that project?
It was. Yes, sir. It was. And that's a good point because we, we had, that originally planned for four-point-five. Now, obviously, this shows four-point-six-five, but that originally planned for four-point-four, four-point-five total on the East Side. And that study was done previously, so we just used that number at that time. What are your options here? Well, option one, you know, we try to partner with the city of Monroe. We think we need another two MGD for a total of four-point-six-five. If we, if Monroe were to build a brand-new plant, it's our understanding that's what they need to do. They need a, to build a brand-new plant. That would mean would, that we would be partnering with them for four-point-six-five or whatever number you wanted, but we use that number of capacity. We estimate that that's about eighty million or so investment. It could be more. But we think that's eighty to a hundred million dollars in investment that you're going to have to come up with. That has about three-quarters of a percent rate increase if you started with that today, which means you'd have to add that on to the base, two-point-five plus point-seven-five is three-point-two-five. And it would take a roughly eight to ten years for you to put that in place and make it operational. Option two, you could develop your own wastewater treatment plant option somewhere on Richardson Creek. And you could still partner with Monroe if you wanted to. You could still do that. The, the key with that is the costs are going to be, they're going to still be in the eighty to a hundred million dollar range. I mean, you're building a brand-new wastewater treatment plant. We're not necessarily going to save a whole lot of money by doing it that way. We own it. That's the difference, but we're not going to save a whole lot of money necessarily by doing it. You have to be, you have to permit it. It's still going to take eight to ten years to permit it. Still going to put it online. Now, benefit that you could realize by doing your own, and I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm just telling you this, is that wherever you locate that plant, you can gain additional area that you could service. Right now, we can serve the areas that we pump currently. But if you wanted to serve areas beyond that, now, let me go back. You wanted to serve areas that were out in this area here, you'd have to pump more, which increased the cost more. If you put that plant somewhere out on Richardson Creek, you can serve a greater area. Not saying you want to. I'm just saying that's the benefit from it. You gain an additional area that you can serve by gravity that you don't have to pump. You don't have to pay that money for. So, that's, that is the benefit of you being able to create your own wastewater treatment plant. The other option is that, like I said before, you do the pump over and you build a thirteen-point-five million dollar investment of, I mean, thirteen-point-five MGD investment into Monroe's plant. You have roughly a twenty-four to twenty-six million gallon plant. We pay our share. They pay their share. That's about a three-hundred million dollar cost and roughly about a six-and-a-half percent rate increase just for that over five years.
On top of the two-point...
On top of the two-and-a-half. Yes, sir. So, those are kind of the options for Monroe at this point in time, I'm sorry, the East Side at this point in time. Last but not least, your six-mile service area. Here's your six-mile service area. As we pointed out, you've got your area to be able to pump from the treatment plant over Charlotte as for a diversion if you needed to. This is really served by gravity flowing over here to McAlpine Creek. Actually goes to a forest main that then pumps to McAlpine Creek. But all this area actually flows by gravity to that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At our retreat, or at SBCC, we heard the town of Wellington, they were advocating a Lower Crooked Creek plant to free up space, I guess, at Twelve Mile Creek, but did they flow to the Six Mile Creek?
So...
No, not all of them.
Yeah, not, they would have, there'd be significant pumping if they were going to try and pump to Six Mile Creek. I'm not saying it can't be done, but if they wanted to use the Six Mile Creek and we were, we were okay with that, it would have to be pumped over there to serve that. It couldn't necessarily be served by gravity.
Okay, so this line, I guess I'm trying to orient, where the, where the projects were at.
So, you've got...
Where, where were their projects at in the...
Yes, some here and some right in here. So, some here, that could certainly possibly be served by gravity. Now, obviously, there's no lines there. You can see there's no, there's no service line there. So, you'd have to create service lines, but that could conceivably work.
And that's their commercial, right?
Yeah, I believe that's on the corner where they have the old Harris teeter that's there. This is the area you'd have to figure out how to pump all of this.
Okay, what are they wanting to do there?
They've got a mix of residential and some commercial in there, is my understanding.
You know, the development, it's on Providence. It's been roads cut, but hadn't anything been done. They want, they want to develop that and they're going to have an inner, inner, a greenway going between that and the downtown area that'll have restaurants and things of that nature.
Yeah, you got canceled. Originally, in the, in the county CIP, there was a project that would ultimately be able to serve this area. So, it would provide for a regional pump station that could actually flow all of this and then ultimately gravity it all the way down to here. There, you still had to have a pump station to serve part of it, but you would be able to flow this area by gravity ultimately down here. And that was in our CIP. It's never been funded. There's no money set aside for it. I think...
Are you talking about higher density or...
So, my understanding from them is that the, they're, they were not looking to really increase density. They were looking to allow small lot sizes but conservation development. You can't really build conservation development on big lots. You need to have small lots for that. And so, they were looking to allow small lots with a lot of conservation area. That requires sewer. More probably like quarter acre to half acre, somewhere in that range. I didn't see the, I, I didn't see the actual designs, though, how big they are, but I would guess quarter acre to a half acre size lots. So, ultimately, planned for Six Mile, this is what you have contracted right now, three MGD. That's what we have. We're currently flowing about one and a, one-point-eight. Obligated, there's, I'm sorry, permitted obligated, we've got another hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons or so. Again, it keeps it very low at sixty-six percent. Projects that are in review, a very small number. Again, we're still staying at about sixty-six percent. It is not managed by the eighty-ninety rule because this is a contract that we have. Charlotte has to manage its treatment facility at the eighty-ninety rule. This is just a contract arrangement that we have. If we wanted to increase that contract, we'd obviously also have to look at what would it take as infrastructural-wise to be able to flow more to it. And I say it can't be done. We just have, what, what would we have to do as far as pipe sizes? What will we need to do to flow more to it if we wanted to flow more to it?
And you're going to be able to get that for us, that capacity?
We, we will get you that number. Yes, sir. What are your decisions? Well, we can seek an increase like we talked about. We can have them do a contract amendment and give us some additional gallons. We, we, we estimate that if you added a million gallons of capacity, it would cost us roughly about seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars annually to add one million gallons. That's not, you know, that's, that's not what we're doing, but that's to add one million gallons.
Now, Monroe, we pay for what we use. Do we pay for what we use here or...
It's the same thing. You pay for what you use. Now, obviously, the, if we had to renegotiate, renegotiate the contract, that's just still the way we would want to do it, but we would be at the mercy of what Charlotte was willing to do. But I assume that's how they'd want to do it. That's, that's how we do it now. All right, so just a summary. Just go back through. See all the stuff. This is all the estimated costs of all the various projects that you have out there. Didn't show this one, but that's seventy-some million if you were to do that one. To show you our rate, our last but not least, our, our staff recommended, recommendations as far as what we think you should consider doing. Number one, you got a base rate increase that you're going to have to do. Number two, we recommend that you expand Lower, the Twelve Mile Creek to nine million gallons. We've estimated that at twenty-six-point-three million. There's your rate impact. There's your total rate right there if you stop right there. We're recommending that you also consider Lower Crooked Creek. Not only do we suggest that you give us authorization in the future to purchase the land and start environmental studies, but we suggest that you consider going ahead and factoring in the cost into your rates. Because if you wait, that just means it's a larger rate increase at a later date. If you were to do that, that adds another one-point-seven-five. That brings you up to four-and-a-half. We also recommend that you consider a partnership with Monroe for expansion. Regardless of whether we build our own or not, we've, we program at least eighty million dollars into our budget for some East Side sewer solution. That's roughly another half, half a percent for five percent. Grassy Branch, this is already done. That's, that's already factored into this five percent or it's already factored into two-and-a-half percent. And then Six Mile, what we recommend you do is that we use the capacity there as necessary to accommodate development. I don't know that we necessarily need to increase that yet. I say we manage it as it is. If we need additional capacity, we can always go ask, but I think we manage it as necessary. And then last but not least, we recommend that you remove the ninety-five percent permitting restriction. You allow us to permit those projects above ninety-five percent while those expansion projects are moving forward. And we'll manage that process and make sure that if we get to the eighty percent rule with the state, that we meet their requirements for the eighty percent. If we get to the ninety percent, we'll meet their requirements for the ninety percent. But we will not have the board establish ninety-five percent cap because you will given us permission for a capacity project. And that's what the state looks at. They want to know that we have a plan in place and that we're going to execute that plan. As long as we're doing those two things, then you can permit all along. They're never going to let you get to one-hundred percent, but they'll let you keep going up as long as you're doing those two things. That's what we have as far as recommendations for projects. On the nineteenth, we will be talking, number one, about rates, rate structures, more questions about how we get to our rates. We'll be talking about miscellaneous fees and what those are. We'll have, again, recommendations for those. And then we'll be asking the board to make decisions on capacity projects. So, you'll need to make decisions on capacity projects, make decisions on miscellaneous fees, and then make decisions on rates because every decision you make has an impact on rates. And we'll ultimately want you to give us, we're likely going to ask you for a three-year rate increase. I mean, the board can choose to do whatever you want to do, but we will ask you to consider a three-year rate increase. Do you have any more questions for me?
You said that the purchase of the land and doing the permits on Lower Crooked Creek would not have a rate increase impact for doing that? Those funds are already in the budget?
That is correct. It will not create a rate impact. However, what I did state is if the board chooses not to fund the construction in a future rate incre, in a rate increase upcoming, understand that future rate increases will be significantly higher because you haven't built time to generate that revenue. That's all the strategy. The board can choose to do that. Just, that's kind of what got us into our Yadkin project. We didn't increase rates as high as we probably should have earlier, which means that we had to increase rates a lot higher to support the Yadkin project when it came time to do it.
Brian, I still disagree with that. We had a hundred-million-dollar surprise...
Sure.
In a meeting that, boom, it's a hundred-million dollars more. Congratulations.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions, Brian?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for a long, long afternoon. I, I hope you got some good information out of it. Please don't hesitate to call us if you have additional questions. We will try to take the items that you've asked for and have those ready for you on the nineteenth.
One, one other thing. You're, you said that if we didn't increase, if we approved the purchase of the land and we didn't improve, approve the rate increase for the total project, tell us what that had to do to us.
We will try to have that for you on the nineteenth.
Okay.
I don't have that right now in front of me, but we'll try to tell you on the nineteenth. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, if we, we're going to talk solid waste. And Jeff Canton, the general manager, general services, if you'll come share those with us, sir.
Yes, sir. If you could give us just a minute to get Ron on the line. Our virtual Ron.
I am here, sir.
He's, he's there somewhere. Let me find him. Let's see. There he is. All right. Take it out. We'll stick this one in here and give it a shot.
Well, you can actually put it right there.
Oh, can you?
Yeah, you can put it right there.
All right, fabulous. That's a new unit here. All right, let's see. I'll leave that right there. Okay, should have it quickly. There we go. All right. A couple of things. I'm going to give this to Lynn. Okay. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Manager, we appreciate you all sticking with us after such a long presentation for our water wastewater and...
That was a dig, I guess.
Hopefully, you know, Brian did it when he was over gross management. He continues to do it with, with water wastewater. It's as long presentations we tease him about. But we do appreciate you allowing us to come back to you after our May eighth meeting that we shared with you some things that are facing us in, in solid waste and shared with you that we would be coming back to you again with some other information and, and some decision points. And today, we're going to step into our, our residential waste recycling program and our Austin Chaney project. So, as we did during our last meeting... So as we did during our last meeting, Ron Gilkerson, our solid waste director, is going to be with us virtually today. We're going to be going through this presentation. Encourage you to ask any questions as we go through. But we're going to be covering all of our residential waste and recycling programs to include Austin Chaney and give you an update on each one of those and with a proposal here at the end that we'd like for you to consider. So with that, Ron, are you with us?
I am with us.
All right. We're excited to have you. So we'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. And again, if you have any questions, please stop us as we go through. Okay, Ron.
Jeff, I don't actually have the presentation up on the screen.
It's not, oh, I got to share. Hold on.
Then we'll get right into it.
Forgot to do that.
That's okay.
Okay. How's that, Ron?
It's coming. All right, we are good to go.
There.
Yes, sir. Well, it's great to see everybody this afternoon again, and we appreciate your time in advance. On behalf of our General Services Department and our Solid Waste Division, I'm very happy to provide you all the following Austin Chaney Residential Waste and Recycling Center presentation for the new redesign to better serve our customers now and in the future.
There we go.
This afternoon, I will be providing information on five main topics. The first one, we'll provide an overview of our current residential waste and recycling center program and the services offered at each of our sites. Second, we'll provide a financial tonnage comparison of our Austin Chaney site versus our five satellite sites. Third, we'll present our new residential waste and recycling center redesign to better serve our residential customers as we continue to grow the program. Fourth, we'll provide a quick overview of our capital improvement fund balance earmarked to pay for the rollout of this new site and its related services. And then finally, we'll provide an overview of upcoming opportunities and decision points needed. Our goal this afternoon is, in this presentation, is to gain your approval to upgrade our Austin Chaney Road facility to better serve our customers with a capital investment of approximately $2.5 million. As we covered in our last presentation, and most of you all are aware, our residential waste and recycling center program has five satellite service centers throughout the county that include Parkwood, Piedmont, Armfield, White Store, and our newest Gold Mine Road facility located behind the Public Works Ops Center. The satellite sites accept garbage bags from our residents, household recycling that includes paper, cardboard, plastics, metal, cartons and glass, used motor oil and used motor oil filters, and electronics at four of our sites, namely Parkwood, Gold Mine, Piedmont, and Armfield. In addition to these services, our Austin Chaney site accepts construction and demolition materials and bulky items, yard waste, white goods, scrap metal, and tires. As most of you all know, we have experienced just phenomenal growth at our Austin Chaney residential site over the last few years. A quick history on the creation of the Austin Chaney Road Residential Center entailed a very low-budget, back-of-the-envelope design that Chris Medlin and myself were forced to put together back in 2016 to separate our residential business from our commercial business due to excessive traffic and increased residential waste volume. We sketched out a site plan at or near the current location of the Austin Chaney Residential Waste and Recycling Center site that we thought would accommodate our customers, and it did for a few years. The initial layout for the new business unit was brought before you all at that time and included a flat fee schedule for approval. Once the program was initiated, we never thought that Austin Chaney residential program would experience the growth and customer participation that it has over the last five years. In support of our requested approval and capital investment in the Austin Chaney site, we thought it was important to demonstrate the utilization and revenue generation at our Austin Chaney site versus our five satellite sites with financial and tonnage comparisons for the first six months of FY '21. In this first graph, we compared our bagged garbage or MSW tonnage generated at our five satellite sites versus our Austin Chaney site. The MSW tonnage accepted at the Austin Chaney site is significantly greater than the volume generated at any one of our individual satellite sites. For instance, you can see at Parkwood, it generated 362 tons, while Austin Chaney generated a little over 3,000 tons in the first six months of FY '21. As a correlation to the previous tonnage bar graph, the associated revenue at our Austin Chaney Road site is a little less than four times greater than our busiest satellite site in Piedmont or Parkwood, generating over $210,000 in revenue versus either the two sites generating around $55,000 in revenue. As we compare our revenue for just MSW or garbage for all the satellite sites in total versus our Austin Chaney site, our five satellite sites generated approximately $185,000 in the first six months of FY '21, while Austin Chaney alone generated $210,000 in revenue. On this slide, the total revenue for all solid waste materials, including construction and demolition and yard waste for Austin Chaney, represents almost twice the revenue of the five satellite sites collectively, with $345,000 in revenue for the first six months of FY '21, with an estimated projection of almost $700,000 for all of FY '21 versus approximately $370,000 for all the five sites collectively. The breakdown of revenue and tonnage generation for Austin Chaney in the first six months of FY '21 is as follows. The MSW, $210,000, for a little over 4,000 tons. The additional materials that make up the difference in total revenue detailed in the previous slide for Austin Chaney include primarily construction and demolition materials at almost $100,000 in revenue for a little over 3,000 tons, and yard waste, approximately $27,000 in revenue for a little over 682 tons of material, all of which have increased significantly over the last five years. This bar graph represents total revenue versus operating expenses for Austin Chaney versus the five satellite sites. As you all can see, the total revenue at Austin Chaney site outweighs the operating expenses shown in the bar graph. If we keep pace for this, the revenue for the remaining six months of this fiscal year, a net revenue of approximately $140,000 will be realized at the Austin Chaney site. As we look at the five satellite sites, our operating expenses are greater than the revenue for the first six months of FY '21. As we mentioned in our last presentation, this is consistent with most satellite convenience center programs in the state due to high staffing costs as well as trucking and transportation costs on non-revenue generating solid waste recyclables. For this quick analysis, it's clear that the Austin Chaney site is net revenue positive, which makes it a bit easier to invest new capital in a program that is reliant on enterprise funding. The new Austin Chaney redesign was initiated to help us manage the high volume of traffic and disposal that we are experiencing today and to accommodate our growth for the foreseeable future. These photos that are up on this slide were taken over the last couple of Saturdays to give you all an idea of the amount of traffic that we experienced at Austin Chaney. In most instances, we attempt to activate a double line of vehicles to help with the backup onto Austin Chaney Road. Sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not. To allow more room for our customers to access the open top container drop-off area located in the center of the facility, our team built a separate construction and demolition drop-off pad towards the rear of the site so we could service higher volume and accommodate more customers. This allows more open top container storage for just MSW or garbage, which lessens the number of roll-off trucks needed for disposal. But as you can see, the fairly recent site improvements still will not allow us to accommodate the high traffic due to the linear nature of this site. This slide represents the overall construction and demolition landfill permit modification expansion site plan that we reviewed with you all in the last presentation and shows how the new Austin Chaney Residential Waste and Recycling Center facility has been integrated into the master plan. Again, just a quick review. The green represents the existing construction and demolition landfill that we're currently utilizing. The pink is our three-acre minor permit modification expansion area. And the balance in yellow represents the 30-plus or minus acre major mod expansion that we'll be holding a public hearing on very soon. The new Austin Chaney site fits nicely with the overall expansion plan and is located in the same general area of the existing site just south of the CND landfill and utilizes the existing site entrance and exit with an added exit onto Island Branch Road just beside the pump station. The engineering site plan shows a much larger site that is completely paved for dust control and ease of access. The site in dimension is almost 300 feet wide and almost 1,000 feet long, giving us approximately six acres of use, and includes a check-in hut that can separate traffic as needed between an access road to a new scale house for the CND landfill expansion and our new residential waste and recycling center facility. This scale house will allow access to large residential loads of CND and fulfill the weight verification requirement of all county trucks servicing roll-off containers for each waste and recycling material type. A large center-covered island is located at the site and is included in the design to receive all recyclable materials such as cardboard, mixed paper, and co-mingled materials in compactor units at each end of the island. Electronics, potential household hazardous waste materials, and used motor oil and filters will be serviced within this covered section of the island. Yard waste will be dropped off at the adjoining composting facility just north of the site, which will be shown on the next slide. A bulky waste drop-off pad that is as large as our commercial MSW transfer station pad will be provided to accommodate box springs and mattresses and furniture items, as well as a separate area for white good drop-off and scrap metals for our customers. The next area includes a large Z-wall design that allows customers to access 10 40-yard containers for MSW garbage, construction and demolition materials, and tires. The container storage provided in this plan triples our existing capacity and will allow customers to drop off materials and exit more quickly. These walls are designed with a grade separation that allows customers to park, unload their materials, and drop them off into the entire length of the containers over a safety rail. The container is positioned with the top of the unit just below the rail, as you will see in the next couple of slides. The separate driveway that's shown on the site below the Z-wall is designed as a restricted driveway for our roll-off trucks only. This will allow us access to the containers when they are full for weighing and disposal at our CND landfill or our transfer station using the rear exit road. With this design, we never have to have our trucks interfere with the residential customers that are utilizing our new center. These next couple of renderings, we're pretty proud of. It really gives us kind of a better sense of how this overall master plan gets integrated into the existing construction and demolition landfill. So with this, the existing entrance area, the check-in hut, the yard waste drop-off area just to the north, as I explained in the previous slide, at our existing composting site, the covered recycling island located near the center of the site, the bulky drop-off pad area, and the remaining Z-wall 40-yard container areas for MSW and CND drop-off, as well as our existing and proposed exit areas are shown here. This is kind of a better depiction of the overall site and the layout of the site. The recycling island, you can see towards the middle of the slide, the grade separation for the bulky waste pad for lift and load access into large trucks for bulky waste disposal, white goods and scrap metal recycling and disposal, as well as the Z-wall layout for ease of access and drop-off of high-volume materials. Most of the large facilities that are similar to this, but there's really not a design that's exactly like this in the state of North Carolina, they incorporate a lot of Z-wall designs because it allows customers to fully access a larger container that we're currently using on our existing site. It allows them to drop the materials in that container. And again, separate of that, we never have to interface with the customer with our roll-off trucks that need to get in there and dispose of these containers from time to time. We feel like with this design, we have enough container capacity to make it through a very busy half-day Saturday, as we've shown in some of the previous slides, the amount of traffic that we have. Another key element to this design is it wraps traffic in a horseshoe pattern around the site that gives us more vehicular storage for this type of facility. The capital improvement and related fund balance has the necessary funds needed to upgrade this residential waste and recycling center facility. With our growing commercial volume and associated net revenue, our healthy operating fund balance is able to support the design and construction of this new project. As discussed in our last presentation, a CIP fund has been created in this year's budget that includes $2.5 million in set-aside funds from our existing $3.5 million operating fund shown on this bar graph to pay for this project. Finally, and in closing, upcoming opportunities and decision points, as we mentioned earlier in the presentation, we're looking for your approval to allow us to access the CIP funds available to build this state-of-the-art facility that will accommodate our high volume and growth needs for our customers. Second item is, based on the meeting, our previous meeting, and your decision and directive, we have advertised for the public hearing portion of our state-required local government approval process for our major permit modification expansion of our CND landfill, which will be held on May 3rd.
So that concludes our presentation. I do have some information I want to share with you all also before we're done. With the assistance of our communications department, we were able to put together a frequently asked questions that we would anticipate people might ask associated with the capacity expansion for the CND landfill. So we wanted to be able to share that with you so that you have that information available to you. So we don't want to forget that. But do you have any questions? After you've gone through it, we can go back and look at the previous slides in terms of the actual layout of the site or any other questions associated with the presentation.
It looked like your operating revenue and expense between your Austin Chaney and your five sites basically come out even. What you, Austin Chaney makes, the other loses.
To some extent, I will share with you that... that there are some expenses in that particular slide that we were looking at that are not accommodated, I'll only find the, probably the best one. All of the expenses associated with the five satellite sites are not captured in this particular information. So while Austin Chaney does compensate to some degree for the losses in the other five satellite sites, all of those expenses associated with the five satellite sites are not necessarily captured in this particular presentation where we show expenses. I think for the first six months, you see that delta that exists of about $75,000. That's through six months, is not fully captured. I think Amy, if Amy's still here, yeah, could probably help speak to that a little bit in terms of being able to capture all of the expenses associated with it. Ron may have some additional input as well.
Yeah, just real quick, and that's a very good question. One of the things that I just wanted Amy and Zach to help us with right now was just look at the general operating expenses for each of these facilities as we kind of compare and contrast. One thing that wasn't shared in our overall losses with the satellite sites, which does the majority of the recycling for our whole solid waste program, are, we didn't include, you know, the electronics expense to recycle electronics, which is just a little over $100,000 a year. As I think we had mentioned in the last presentation, our subsidy for white goods has been cut off by DEQ, and there's going to be other subsidies that are going to be reduced or removed as we move through some of these programs. And also, we did not include our overall costs for our waste oil disposal and our filter disposal programs, which is also added cost. So again, we just wanted to kind of look at general operating expenses for FTEs, part-time folks to run our residential collection sites, transportation costs to transport, you know, recyclables that are non-revenue generating from our satellite sites to back to Austin Chaney. One of the nice things about Austin Chaney is that whatever is generated there either gets disposed of there or gets transported directly to the MSW landfill for disposal, whereas the satellite sites has another component on top of that of moving and transportation costs and labor costs associated with taking these materials from each of these satellite sites across the county and moving them to the central Austin Chaney site and then getting them where they need to be for that final disposal. So there is a lot more cost with satellite site operation over, again, the central facility at Austin Chaney.
So he's essentially outlining some of those costs that aren't captured necessarily in this particular bar graph that are natural expenses associated with satellite residential waste recycling sites. So it's not abnormal what we see with our program. We're fortunate in the fact that we have Austin Chaney that when we went back and looked at all of the materials that are accepted at Austin Chaney, which aren't necessarily accepted at the satellite sites, that we capture revenue there and its co-location to the existing landfill site helps reduce some of those expenses like transportation of product and moving material from point A to point B for us. So it's, there's some additional expense. We can get you more specific information in terms of all of those, wrapping them up. I think Amy, that would be...
So like recycling costs, we capture waste in the recycling cost center, and we just estimate what we can charge the site per ton because we don't do a physical accounting, we don't charge the sites for that money, but we can certainly give our allocation estimate.
So that may be more helpful in terms of just seeing the bottom line between the five satellites and Austin Chaney.
Well, you need to see the total picture because I remember when we changed the rates, and if you come back to us and ask for a change in rates, we're going to have to understand much more detail than what we had today.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Today's presentation was largely to give you a bigger-picture view and to ask consideration for accessing those funds that have been set aside, the capital fund set aside specifically for Austin Chaney in the capital plan for solid waste. So that was for this particular meeting, that's what we were hoping to get to.
I think, Jeff, just one other point, if I may. I think it's also extremely important for everybody to understand that when we kind of stepped forward with Austin Chaney and we separated that waste stream from residential to commercial, my goodness. We, I mean, if I would have looked at my crystal ball and said five, six years from then, we'd be doing, you know, a little over $700,000 just in Austin Chaney alone, I'd think that we were all crazy. But it's a very good program for our residents. It's not a program that you see across the state in every county that offers a lot of solid waste or solid waste disposal through a landfill. So when we created all these different, you know, waste streams that we would handle residentially, I really believe that speaks to why so many of our residential customers use this site, is because you can do everything that you could ever think about with a solid waste, maybe minus our household hazardous waste potential program. But it is a soup-to-nuts disposal and/or recycling facility that needs an upgrade similar to the one that we presented here this afternoon.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. Okay, yes, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, we talk budget. Blake, you're going to have to talk fast.
I was going to say that my presentation had about five more slides than Brian's did, but for time, I weeded it down, so it should be manageable.
You know, we have a switch up here.
All right.
Yeah, right.
I have to say, I admire your stamina for going through this and still going strong. So, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, and I want to share a couple of, I want to present to you a project and a structure that we've implemented here in Union County over the past year or so, and I want to share that with you so you understand the work that's been done and understand the value that we're trying to bring to the organization under the direction of our county manager, Mark Watson, and the deputy county manager, Michelle Lancaster. The things we'll be talking about today are, on the right, you'll see the performance and budget, performance measurement, performance budgeting, and then performance budgeting in Union County. And on the left side, I listed our BOCC strategic objectives, which I want to keep in mind always because that directs everything that we do, and that's, we aspire to live up to and carry forward and carry out those objectives. And as we go through the presentation, there's a couple of slides, bullet points that'll link back to that, too, so I want to have it as a reference. So, performance and budget. We know that one of our efforts always and one of our goals is to streamline the budget process, to be as efficient as we possibly can. I'll jump over some of these, but I wanted to share with you that this has been a goal in the federal government also, as hard as that is to believe sometimes. Going back to before the Great Depression in 1921, with the creation of the Office of Management and Budget, then there was a few other initiatives to, with the end goal of focused on performance budgeting and linking resources and activities and inputs and outputs. So that's what the concept is that I'll be sharing with you, is the idea of linking inputs and outputs and linking resources to performance. Because we all, you know, we want to know if we're doing a good job. We want to know if we are being efficient in our operations. We want to know if we're offering a quality service to residents, and we want to know if we are reflecting you well or representing you well as a county employee in our daily activities to make sure that you're proud of the efforts that we're giving as well. I want to mention that this, as I showed before, this concept has been around for quite some time. The, as we know, things that happen at the federal level oftentimes roll down to the state level and the local government level. And this concept of performance budgeting or being efficient and effective with your operations and budget has been around at the local government level for quite a long time as well. And I'm showing you here some of our neighbors, some of our peer counties, and how long they've been at it. The city of Charlotte actually was the first in the nation to establish a corporate scorecard, which is one version of performance management. And actually, is referred to, or has been referred to as the gold standard for performance measurement to create a balanced scorecard. Gaston County's been at it since 2020, Mecklenburg County since 2002. And I'll mention also that Michelle was a key part of that at the leadership level of implementing that structure in Mecklenburg County, which is a managing-for results process under our county manager, Harry Jones, who was also a visionary in this area as well, did a lot of great work there. City Monroe created theirs in 2014, and Union County 2020. So we're moving forward, and we want to put our best foot forward to be able to measure our efforts. Wrong way. Okay. So, performance measurement. Performance measurement is the practice of establishing quantitative indicators to track progress against strategy. An individual performance measure, which is part of the concept of performance measurement, is the numeric description of a department's work and the result of their daily activity. It's based on data, and it tells the story of the department's achievement towards its objectives. Good performance measures cover a wide variety of types. The most basic that you can have is an output or a workload measure or a transactional measure, where you just count the number of things that happen each day. If I'm, if my job is to answer phones each day, I could measure how many phone calls do I get and how many have I responded to. That would tell, give you an idea of how many people you would need to staff a certain time in a certain area, but it wouldn't give you an idea of how well I was doing it, how efficient I was doing it, how much it costs the county to do that. That's where you move into an efficiency measure, which usually expresses a ratio. So you could say, you could take a workload measure, maybe the number of cases that a social worker and social services carries or works at a time, and compare that to the total number of caseworkers that you have and you could measure total number of cases per caseworker. Or billing and code could measure the number of inspections they do per day, number of inspections per inspector, things like that, to get an idea of how efficient they are in their efforts or how much it costs per inspection to do. And these are all things that, as department director, it would help them to measure their workload, measure their efficiency and their productivity. We also know that outcome measures are important. Those are measures of improvement. So we can, we know how many actions we're doing. We can know how much it costs us to do that. We can know how many employees it takes to do those things. But an outcome measure would tell us how, what's the impact of those things combined on the community or on the customer base. An example of that would be, again, a caseworker in food nutrition services and social services. If they, if you measure, they're the number of, the decrease of the workload or the caseload, then that could be a measure, an outcome measure, because that means you're doing a good job and you're helping move people than dependents, and so they're no longer dependent on that service that we provide. Or in another case, if you had, if you measure the number of children in returning home out of foster care, that'd be a very positive thing, and it would be a good outcome for both the county and for the child and the family in question. There's also customer service measures, which we have a program in place now. It's called the Voice of the Customer, where we request information or give surveys to customers and ask them if we provided a high-quality of service to them, if we've shown them respect, if we've served them in a timely manner, if we've, again, if we've provided a quality service. That's another important part of the performance measurement processes. And then there's financial measures, which are, you can keep track of your general fund debt per capita, your general fund expenditures per capita, or your overall bond rating. And while we're just beginning our efforts in performance measurement, the finance office previously did a good job of tracking economic and financial measures like the bullet there below. So we're building off some of the work that's been done previously also. Performance measures create the following opportunities. They allow us to quantify efficiency and effectiveness of county services and activities. They establish a framework to set meaningful operational targets toward goals across all departments. They demonstrate progress towards organizational goals as well and establish organizational standards of excellence. We can compare department performance to other peer counties to see if our billing code office is as efficient as another one or if we do it at a lower cost or, you know, different things like that. And also, providing this information to the county manager allows the manager to make data-driven decisions. It also, shared with the board, allows you to make data-driven decisions in the budget process and throughout the year as time comes to make, to weigh in and give direction to the organization. It also establishes a common language between departments and management and the community about how do we measure these things? How do we talk about them? How do we discuss them? And make sure we all have a common base of language and understanding to carry that forward. The performance measures connect the organizational vision to allocated resources. So if we start at the highest level, which is, of course, is our Board of County Commissioners, and look at the vision that you've put forward for us, where our strategic objectives, which as we saw earlier, were of public safety, economic development, and so forth. We hold that at the highest level, and we want to link every effort and every dollar that we have to that division and those objectives. Next, we would look at our daily activities, which are, there's too many to count, basically everything done by every employee in the county each day towards the goal of supporting the strategic objectives that we have. We look at the operational plan, which of course is our budget and the vision of our county manager set forth for that year and then adopted by the board, and then also linking that to resources allocated. So if we take that framework and overlay it to Union County, we would start at the BOCC strategic objectives, and then we would link that to departmental activities, then link that to the county budget, which, you know, is the engine that pushes the county forward, and then connect that to local tax dollars, which would be the fuel that goes into the engine to push us forward following the vision that we've set forward. So that's how, that's, gives you an idea of the linkage between the different ideas. Performance budgeting links service delivery results to departmental budgets. It connects the input of resources, again, local tax dollars, to the output of services or departmental activities. The county chart of accounts was realigned about five or so years ago to make performance budgeting possible. And that's, that was before I came, and I'm very appreciative of the team, Beverly and Daniel and Debbie, who went through that process before I came, because it's a monumentous task, and they did a wonderful job to restructure that. So it's, the framework is set perfectly to move forward with this type of program. The performance measures link to departments at the program and sub-program level, which is the lowest level of stratification in the budget. So we can easily link efforts and dollars from the county to measure how they're doing, to share that with different folks. Also, we can show how much a service costs versus what the value is being provided at that price. So we know everything has its price, right? So every dollar that comes in gets allocated out to a different department for the purpose of providing a specific service. By linking performance measurement and budgeting, we can say, for the dollars that come in and are applied to service X, it costs us this much, and we're measuring our activities in place to be able to report back to say if we are doing a good job, a great job, or if we need a little more attention there to provide the service at the level that the community expects. This just gives you a framework of the breakdown of the county budget. At the top is the BOCC strategic objectives, and then you come down to the bottom two, which, what would be the department and the division, and then program, which is a subset of each department budget. And the sub-program is the lowest level of each department's budget, and that's where we would attach a measure, a performance measure, to the sub-program or a portion of the departmental budget and link the two with a performance measure to be able to say, report to the community and say, hey, we know the county does this. We're involved in providing this service to the community. How much does it cost us to do that? We can show you how much it costs to do that. Then the next question might be, how many, how much of that do we do each year? And we could say, well, we know exactly how much of that we do. We do this many. And we could say, well, is that, based on that, are we doing, does that mean we're doing a good job? Are we being efficient? Are we too slow at that? You know, how would we know that? Sometimes we, residents will call us and tell us, hey, we need a little, we waited a long time for this, or this person was not as nice to me as they should have been. But this allows us to have a standard set of measures and reports and connections to the budget and operations to... to the budget and operations to, to report quarterly to the manager and to the board and to the department directors about how, how we're doing, and to review that each year. This is just an overview of the work we've, we've done. Over the past two years, we've consulted with departments, met with department directors, and really tried to get an idea of what the core, the core activities are of their business, and, and helped them to identify some measures that would really get to the heart of what they're doing and what they're spending county resources on. And in, in almost all the cases, department directors already had a robust series of measures in place that they would use to measure their own operations and, and to make decisions, both planning and, and, and budget on their own. We just hadn't collated those or unified those at the county level. And so this process was, was to go through and, and consult with departments, look at what they already had, if it made sense to create it, to use those measures to create it. We did that with other ones, we worked with the directors to create new measures, and, and put them in a framework that makes sense for Union County. What we're doing now is implementing those measures into the FY22 budget process, so that we can measure efficiency and activity in FY21, and then get a baseline of how folks are, are, are performing. And then going into FY22, review the efforts from 21, and discuss with, with directors, you know, this is what we, we set forth to measure, which we decided was, was really the, the key, the key efforts of what your department does. These are the first year results. What would be a meaningful target to set for FY22 of how you could improve upon what, what we're seeing here? And maybe they're great, but you always want to challenge yourself, and always want to push yourself to set a stretch target, to maybe if your, if your response time is, is a, you have a 48-hour turnaround time, if you're meeting that target, you know, what can you do to, to bring that down to a 36-hour return time? Sometimes, to, to do that, it may require some additional investment of, of county dollars. And if you have those data points to do that, well, that's a great way to build your budget requests the next year to say, this year we accomplished these things at this rate and this efficiency level. If we could have, there's one, one area here where we're, we're not doing so great on, but we feel like with the further investment of, of one full-time position, that we can push that up into a, a green result also, and we can have greens all across the board. And then it would be up to the county manager or to the board to say, is that additional investment worth it, based on the results we're seeing? Is, is that price of investment worth that result? And that can be, you know, kind of change the discussion from, well, folks are asking for these positions, are asking for these resources, we, we can tie it to more discernible data points, and be able to really have something to, to look back to, to compare those, and those enhancement requests to their actual performance, and see, see the full picture of that, of that story. I want to show you here, this is, you had two packets that I shared with you. This, this one is a, a list of all of the departmental measures that we have put together for Union County this year. And I want to say quickly too, and I'm, I'll be done in just a second, but the, this is the initial list of measures. So this is the first one that we've had in Union County, for the first, for performance measures for all departments. Once we get through the first year, we'll, we'll look at it, we'll sit down, take a look at them, talk to the directors, to see if the data was meaningful for them, if it was really shared what they, what they hoped it would, and with the manager to see if it gives him what he needs. And I'm sure we'll refine, in the first year, refine some measures and make them a little more, you know, touch them up as we need to, like you would anything. But this is a reflection of what you'll see in this packet. On the, you'll see this for the sheriff's office there in the, the orange row. If you go down, these are the measures that the sheriff has put forward that, that really get to the key points of what the sheriff's mission is in Union County. And on the, the left column, you'll see there's the strategic objectives. That's where we show how the efforts or programs of the sheriff's office link back to the five BOCC strategic objectives as set forth. So obviously, the sheriff is, you know, is their, their key partner in providing public safety. And so it would be no surprise that the sheriff links to the board objectives in, under public safety. Then go, once to the right, to the program name, the activities in the departmental budgets are broke down into programs and subprograms, as I mentioned, and you'll see the list of the ones that the sheriff offers there. Jail Operations is the first one. And then the subprogram name to the right. And so then you'll go forward and you'll see the name of the performance measure. The top one is inmates per month. So they, the sheriff wants to always track how many inmates they have per month, or the average number of inmates, to see, you know, if, what that tells them about, about their operations. If you, as you move forward, you get more information and, and more results. These results are through December 31st of, of last year, but we'll, we'll finish those out by the end of the year. But as you go forward each year, you'll see a history of what your performance was year over year, and you can compare it to previous years, and then you can use that information to set targets for the, the next year. So that's an example of the sheriff, and you can see the departments in your packet as you, if you have time to look at that. And this is just an example of how we are using this information in FY, to build the FY22 budget. This is an example of a, a budget enhancement request sheet that departments fill out and submit to the budget office, and we compile into reports to share with the county manager of what the departments are requesting as far as enhancements for that, for that budget year. So I want, I want you to see the very bottom where it says, "Performance Measure Connection." We, now that we have some performance measures in place, we always ask departments, hey, if you're asking for another two positions, another, you know, service contract of some type, the manager wants you to share with him what performance measure this request will link back to, so that in a year, if that enhancement is granted, the manager can look at the results of that performance measure to see if that investment did what the department director said it was going to do, or what they committed to doing, or if it increased the results or not. So it's a way of, of kind of, you know, linking all of this together from the board's strategic vision, to the manager's budget, to the inputs and the expense that, you know, the great expense that's, that's applied to the county budget. That's, that's one way we, we do that there. Yeah.
And especially the sheriff's office, and I know a lot of our departments, is directly impacted by our increase in population. So do you, will you be tracking that as well? You know, because if, if the number of inmates goes up 200, but our population has gone up 10,000, and it might explain that, I'm just...
Yeah. That's a great point. And let me, let me clarify also by saying, all of the measures will have context around it, but the departments will always have an opportunity to provide context about their results. So if there's a result, you know, that is really, really high, and looks like they're doing an amazing job, or is really low for some purpose, or a big swing, before we report it, we'll, we'll go through and do our due diligence to just verify that the numbers are, you know, are accurate. And then, then the department director would meet with their assistant county manager, and be able to, you know, just discuss what were some of the drivers that caused this, versus what caused that? If there are areas where they'd like to develop an enhancement request for the next year to improve upon one of the areas where they maybe, you know, didn't score so well, that, that's the other half of this, is it's not just totally data-driven and totally complete quantified numbers, there's also the, the contextual side, which gives you the, you know, the, the other side of the, of the coin too. So that's a, a good point. Then, let's see. Then what we'll do is, when the, the numbers are, are complete, and we have the, the measures in place, and we've collected data for a full year, which will be at the end of this budget year, then in July and August, we'll ask departments to update their numbers for the full year. And once they do that, then we'll, we'll be creating dashboards, which would be, which is a, a set for each department of, of all of their measures, displayed graphically. In this case, it's bar charts. And we can, we can show what their, what their results have been for the year, and then going forward into next year, we can show what, what targets they would set to, to say how they, how they want to perform the next year. So if they want to try and maintain, if they feel like they're doing a great job and, and the community is happy, you know, set a main, to maintain what they're doing. If they want to do, set a stretch target to try and push themselves a little bit farther, they can do that. And then we can report on these quarterly, when most departments will be reporting their, their results on a quarterly basis. This will be open for the department directors to look at any time, the manager will have access to this, their ACM will have access. And if we ever want to get to a point where we wanted to post it on the county website to be available for the, for residents to see, that's, that's easily done also. This capability comes through OpenGov, which is our, the, the budget software that the county invested for us a, a couple of years ago. So we're really fortunate and appreciative of that, that we can fully utilize that for the benefit of, of the, the county. Also, when this is done, and we have one year's full of data, we'll, we'll complete a, a performance report, which will be a, a report of the high-level measures that are most impactful to the community, with, with context, and a, and a review of the effort that went into it, the performance, some of the key, the key components, and then, you know, the impact for the, the year going forward. And I will share that with the county manager, and then with, with the board, if you, if you'd like to, to, to see that. So that's, that's basically what we've been doing, is on the performance side, we want to establish a, a performance process here in Union County. We want to, to link inputs and outputs, and resources, and efficiency. And we appreciate the, the support of the county manager and the executive team in doing that, and look forward to, if that's something that, that interests you as the board, to report back to you and, and, and get your input, to see if you'd like to update the strategic objectives at some point, or, you know, build those out a little bit more, whatever that would look like, that's, that'll be very important for this process going forward. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond to them.
Any questions?
I'd, I'd be very interested in learning more, and perhaps getting access to OpenGov or whatever the platform is for reporting for the Board of County Commissioners. I know here it was mentioned that the data-driven process is important for county management and also the board, so I'd very much love to have some purview into that. One question I had is, is this just for general government, or does this performance management also extend to enterprise activities?
It, it does include public works and solid waste. As you, if you have time to flip through the, the booklet with the measures from all departments, you'll notice that not every department has a list of measures yet. For example, I'm one, the budget department, that it, it's a little bit difficult to, to create measures for what we do. You know, we're going to work towards that and try to do that, but it's just a little bit, it's, it's less intuitive than fleet operations. You know, they, they do, you know, they fix cars, they do very tangible things, and so it's a little easier for those folks. But, but you'll, you'll see that, and it's, it's, the intent is for it to touch all departments across the county eventually.
Can you speak to how some of these performance man, performance measures are arrived at? I mean, I imagine probably some perform, performance measures even within a department may be competing, or they're trade-offs for. For instance, you mentioned time to resolve a customer problem. Well, you would like that number to go down, but at the same time, you also want the quality of service to be high. So can you speak to how some of these different performance managers are arrived at, and maybe how you kind of work through setting values and trading off amongst them?
Sure.
Or is that beyond the scope of this?
No, I'd be happy to. First I want to say, before I answer that, is that the, one of my teammates, Adrian Rory, has taken on this project, and she's the one that's carrying this forward, so I want to make sure and give her credit for all the work she's done, because she's been a great help for this. But as far as your question goes, we, we met with all the departments and basically just had a, went through an analytical, analytical process and said, you know, what are the, what are the four or five major functions that your department is involved in? You know, what are the key things that you guys do? And then after that, asked them, you as a department director, and you look across at your department, how, how do you know when, when you're being successful, when your team is successful? What are the things that pop up to tell you that? You know, and each department has, it's something different, but they're somewhat similar, you know? In some cases, departments are held, held accountable to state, state measures or state mandates. Like, when you look through, through there, you'll see Department of Social Services, theirs are, are basically all taken, taken from state requirements that they have, and, and state targets that they have to meet. And so that one was pretty easy. We just had to try and bring it to a manageable number, because there's so many of them. And we want to find a balance between being so granular that we get lost in the data, but, but bringing it high enough that it's meaningful to you and to the manager at the same time. So we, we had a series of conversations with the departments to, to really let them, to lead them to what's most important and most key to what they're doing. And the, the assistant county managers were, were kind enough to join in those meetings and give their input, and be very involved in giving their feedback and, and letting their ideas be heard as well. So it was a very, I felt like it was a very collaborative effort.
How many, how many departments have customer surveys to get feedback on the perception of quality of service?
I, I don't have the exact number offhand, but, but the majority do. It seemed like there, there were only a handful that, that didn't have something either already in place, or a good idea of, of how they could implement that over the next year. So I would, I was, I was impressed that most people already did. And a lot of work was done a few years back with, with Michael James and Jody, worked on the Voice of the Customer process. And that's what, that major effort was, is to push departments to come up with a, a customer service survey, or some type of callback process to try and get a sample of, you know, how they were performing with, with their customer service. So a lot of that was already in place, it was just kind of getting those data points and putting them together in, in one, in one process.
Okay. Great. Any further questions? Thank you, Blake.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I believe that concludes our special meeting today, unless you have something else. Okay? That I will make a motion that we adjourn our special meeting and come back at 6 o'clock with our regular commission meeting. Pardon?
Aye.
Thank you.[1594.26]